Monday, September 29. We'll shortly be joined by Acting Town Manager Steve Delaney, but I'm joined by Vice Chair Anthea Brady, members Bill McGonigal, Paris Vayani, and Mike Bettencourt will join us in a little bit as well. Our first order of business tonight is town council interviews, and we have Harrington Heap here with us. So I will let you introduce yourselves, but we have cameras rolling, and I think Bill's going to run this part of the meeting with questions and the like. But yeah.
You introduce yourselves first, and then I'll turn over to Bill if that sounds okay.
Yep. Donna Brewer here from Harrington Heap. I have been doing municipal law since 1998. Currently, the firm's been in existence a lot longer than that, specializing in municipal law all through its existence. We are currently town council for 17 towns, and we do special council work as well. I've provided you with some materials, some of which have been brought up to date at the request of Bill. One of the things you'll find in the left-hand side of the packet is an updated list of how our expenses have compared to what our town's budgets have been over the past few years. And I think if you'll take a look, you'll see that we are under budget on all of them except for one, which can be explained. But I think you'll find that we have the experience that you need. We have the range of training that you need. We can answer anything, and also, we are indeed quite cost-effective, as well as good people to work with. We do like to keep our relationships friendly and open.
I'll just dive in for a minute. My name is Brian Bertram. Donna would be your primary counsel. I would be your backup. Like Donna, I have many years of experience in municipal practice. I sort of took a meandering route to get into municipal law. I started at a large law firm as a litigator, served the Commonwealth as an Assistant Attorney General for several years, and now I'm here. And here I'm going to stay. I really believe in local government. I really enjoy the work. And Donna has kind of covered the firm, so I think at this point, we're probably more interested in what you have to ask us than in what we have to just stay here as talking heads. So let's dive right into it.
Do you mind just stating the name of the firm? That was the name of your firm in 2022?
Miara's in Harrington.
Great. Because I think some people may remember it by that name.
Yes, yep. Yeah, Ray retired, and when he did, you know, we switched the name of the firm, but it's virtually the same people, and Ray is very much enjoying retirement for him.
So he won't be serving as town council for us in a new way?
Not this, not in this lifetime.
Good expectation setting. So I know I have a couple of questions, and some of them are broad and some of them are specific.
Sure.
And some of them are really just to see how you answer questions. And so, you know, because of the role of town council, you are going to be getting questions from all over the place, and some are going to make sense, and some will be on topic. But, you know, how you answer is just as important as what you actually give as an answer is one reason I don't want any of these interviews to be terribly scripted, because your job is not going to be terribly scripted. So I didn't ask anybody to come in with anything prepared, because that's not the way it's going to work. You've been in front of hot benches before, I'm sure. And I would say that the town of Winchester is a very hot bench. So with that said, one big general question, which I'm sure I'll have follow-up on, is what do you see your role as town council, and what is it that you need to do to make sure our town is succeeding?
Fundamentally, my job as town council is to help you secure the result that you want in the most efficient legal manner. So all I can do is recommend. That's all any town council can do. I can't make you do anything. But what I can do is if you tell me that you are trying to fund a particular project, and you're using a finance source that you're not allowed to use for that purpose, I will tell you that, but I will also tell you where you can find the funding, what source would be legal for you to use for that project. So that's just a minor example of something that I see my role, is to work with you to accomplish what you want to accomplish.
Can you give maybe a good, concrete example of how you've done that for another town? I think one thing to respect here is you counsel towns, you live in the law as your profession, you do it every single day. I have been on this select board for a year and a half. Paris has been on it for half a year. Anthea's on the four, three and a half, and Michelle's coming up on three. So you have much more experience. I don't know where all the funding sources are. So you might.
Yes.
So can you give us an example of where a town had a problem, and maybe they didn't even know how to fix it, and you shepherded them to the solution that they needed?
On a funding question in particular, one thing that comes up a fair amount is the use of funds for revolving funds. That we have had towns that try to use estimated receipts for that fiscal year for their expenditures for the activity that is supported by the revolving funds. That's not the way they work, so we tell people how revolving funds work. On the non-finance side, something that comes up a lot, it's rather mundane, but it does come up a lot, which is that committees will form subcommittees. And it will be for a particular, you know, to investigate something typically. And when they do that, they may not recognize, often don't recognize, that when the committee forms the subcommittee, you have formed something that is subject to the open meeting law. And therefore, they forget to post agendas and minutes within time under the open meeting law. So our job will be to say, either you start posting and create minutes for the meetings that you missed, or what we might recommend is instead you dissolve that subcommittee, you give the task to the town manager, and the town manager then can meet with whoever he wants to meet. And that group that he meets with to provide him advice to get back to you is not subject to the open meeting law. So it's that kind of mundane thing that we might be more attuned to than somebody who is a layperson who doesn't work with the law as much is going to be aware of.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So this is a big one in our town, because our town has a lot of volunteers and a lot of bodies. So let's suppose this board asked a couple of folks to go off and research a topic, you know, let's just take something on the Community Preservation Act, and to work with, but a subquorum number of people, and then to work with, you know, a couple other people from, say, the Capitol Planning Committee who are not on this board, but again, a subquorum for them. Where does that cross the line into being a subcommittee that then itself has to be noticed versus just a group of people researching, looking into things, and then reporting back to the Select Board or the CPC that are properly noticed, sort of public forums?
It depends on who formed the group. So if the group is formed by the committee, it's going to be a subcommittee. If a citizen comes to you and says, hey, Paris, I really want to get together with some friends of mine and set up a community garden. Can we get together and get some ideas and present them to your board? That's not going to be a subcommittee.
Right. But if we, at this board, just to make sure I understand how you're thinking about it, said, you know, Anthea and Bill, why don't you guys go and research some topic for us, and just not not come to us with a hard recommendation, just research it and bring us back some information, would that be a subcommittee?
That's going to be a subcommittee.
Okay. We could explore that more. I think that would be getting free legal advice. But it does start to get into another aspect that I certainly want to ask about. We're the Select Board. We're one of many boards and committees. There are lots of boards and committees that will need legal advice. The zoning board, for instance, the planning board at times. You know, the schools have their own legal counsel, and we do have our own separate labor counsel that's worth. But we are a town full of volunteers who are very smart. Many of them are lawyers. Many of them know when to ask for legal advice. But that can mean that there can be lots of boards who have their own opinions or who want opinions from you that can quickly run up legal bills. How are you going to control the flow of information and the billing that goes with it when we have many volunteers, many boards, many committees that are looking to you to help them with what they need to do?
Do you want to take this one?
Yes, sir. I can handle that one. I mean, I don't think you're, Steve is here yet, but, you know, I mean, that's typically where it starts, right? Like, we work through town staff to have a process. What we don't want to end up happening, particularly in a town, as you described, where we have a lot of interested boards, is kind of the free-for-all, where everybody just calls council. And, you know, it's not necessarily that it's a bad thing that people are taking interest. I would argue that it's a good thing when you have that many interested people. But you want to be efficient as you do it. So as a lawyer, you know, I want to figure out who are the stakeholders? How can I most efficiently organize, whether it's a call, or a Zoom, or maybe even an in-person meeting, to, you know, have me do the work once? Rather than listen on the phone 10 consecutive times to 10 different people, have them all in the same place and do it once, and collect the information that we need so that we can really efficiently give legal advice to, you know, often when you have projects, there's multiple boards, and you want to stay coordinated. So working through town staff to make sure that the flow of legal work is coming into us in an orderly way, and making sure we know not just the person who's asking, but all of the affected stakeholders so that we can be efficient, that's a big part of it. I would say the other part of it is just simple communication, regular check-ins to make sure, you know, we kind of understand where we're running against the budget, you know? Maybe this is a heavy month. Maybe we need to think about what we're doing that month and pull back. Just really having those kind of conversations. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I have some gray in my beard, so I remember the day when everybody picked up the phone, and they didn't just shoot emails off to everybody about these kind of things. Like, there's no substitute for talking and making sure that we're on the same page, and that you guys know what's going on, and that we're not just sort of off in some silo somewhere down in Wellesley and not in Winchester, and running the clock and thinking we're doing a great job, and then in reality, you guys are getting a bill that you don't want.
Kind of build it with that. You have to answer our questions as the elected officials. You're also servicing the staff as well. This is an easy question. Are you open to the idea of having some regular in-person office hours here at Town Hall where particularly staff, I think it's most pertinent for them, can walk in and just get some questions answered face-to-face very quickly?
Oh, sure. We do that for some of our clients. Any of the towns, excuse me, that have asked for that, we have done that. I wanted to pick up on Brian's point of describing how we try to control it.
Yes.
How you control it on your side is by funneling the requests through somebody, whether it's through town manager, as Brian mentioned. Some towns even will have a portal whereby people have to upload their legal request, and it has to go through a screening, whether it's a town manager or the assistant to the Select Board, somebody who then approves whether that request can go to town council. That's much stricter than most towns do, but it is one method that I am aware of some of our clients do.
Do you mind if I ask?
Go ahead.
In terms of the office hours, how do you make sure that those are effective? So that people are coming to the office hours, that they're using them effectively, and sort of would you do other special topics or things like that if you saw a need for that?
Couple of answers to that. One is where we do have office hours, there is never a question that those hours are well-used. You know, they, people come once a week, and whether it's an hour or two hours, those hours get used. So that's not a concern. As for general topics, we've got it in our proposal, but I will emphasize that we do enjoy and we offer free training on topics of your choice, usually one or two topics a year. We've done, both Brian and I have done them for our clients, will do open meeting law, public records, ethics, sexual harassment and discrimination, a variety of other topics that we've done. So we let you pick the topics, but those are usually open either to department heads or all staff, and give sort of the general overview, not just staff, but also to the volunteers, so that they get an overview. They don't just have to, you know, read, yes, I got the open meeting law guidance, but they can ask questions at these training seminars.
Yeah, that's a tricky one. Before we get too far, let me introduce Mike Bettencourt. He's our fifth member.
Nice to meet you.
Also, longest-serving here. Anyways, those are good questions, and they also get to another kind of general concern that I know I have. You have office hours, you're answering questions face-to-face. People might pick up the phone, call you, get an answer. Whoever's on the other line heard the answer. But we have to answer to each other. We have to answer to town meeting. And sometimes questions are very complex, and sometimes questions repeat, and they come back, and we have to deal with the same thing over and over again. How are you going to work to make sure we're not wasting our time on questions that have already been answered, or questions where you haven't gone in the full story in the past, or questions that we know are going to recur in the future? And so we don't want to, you know, go through the whole rigmarole again.
Yeah, I'll start with that. I'm sure Donna has thoughts on that, too. I mean, to some extent, it varies by town. And, you know, starting out as town council, we're going to do our very best to leverage what was done before, but we really are building a data bank, and that's sort of the first, you know, major thing to not repeating work, is simply documenting it. We're lawyers, we should write down what we do. And in particular, in terms of making sure that everybody knows what's going on, whether it's a well-crafted email, an opinion letter, whatever else, you know, if we're giving legal advice to one member of the board, it's rare where it makes sense not to distribute that to the full membership of the board. You know, as I was talking about earlier, we always try to keep in mind, with a lot of the projects, that it often is multi, you know, different boards that are involved. You know, I'm working on something right now down on the Cape where we have a very large cellular tower that's proposed. It came to me by way of a hearing before the zoning board of appeals, but it's like, well, this is going to have site plan reviewed before the planning board. So next thing I do after making sure the, you know, town administrator knows what I'm doing is I'm going to call the town planner, who's in charge of the planning department. Okay, let's talk about this, because, you know, ZBA is going on Wednesday. When are you guys doing this? Okay. Well, I'm writing a legal opinion for the ZBA on the federal act that actually controls a lot of what's going on, and I'm pretty sure most of the town officials don't know too much about. So I told her, I'm like, I should probably CC the planning board on this, too, so for when we do that, to make sure that, you know, A, everybody knows what's going on, and B, having that letter is important. You know, we're getting wind that there may be more of these towers in the future, whether it's in that town or in other places. So having that letter handy is going to avoid a repeat of doing this, you know, kind of in the future. So, you know, it really is documenting, it's making sure that we keep in mind that we service the entire town, that legal questions come from one source, but they may affect others, and make sure that information gets disseminated. And then it's, you know, like any other firm, we have, you know, sort of an organized, you know, document database that we can search, we can figure out. And then at the end of the day, it rests on the fact that you have two attorneys here who are kind of responsible. You know, Donna's going to be the expert in Winchester at our firm, and I'm going to be your backup, so I'll equally be an expert. Anything that comes in is going to run across one, or the other, or both of our desks. And to the extent, it may not be a question where we're going to be the ones addressing it, there may be a lawyer who's better suited to it, Donna and I still know what came in the past, and we'll be there to sort of quarterback that knowledge retrieval and that efficiency of process to make sure that we're not dropping the ball on that.
You mentioned zoning on the Cape. I have testimony that has described it as being a blood sport, so I can appreciate having written documentation to back up what the towns tried to do down there. That goes a long way. With the staff that you just brought up, is it your intent, then, that Donna, you'd be there, present with us at town meeting in the first call for any time we might need you here at a Select Board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're backup whenever Donna can't be there?
I'm backup whenever Donna can't be there. Who knows? Maybe I'll come the first town meeting cycle, just to see how things work here, too.
Sure.
No charge. I'm kind of a glutton for punishment. I love municipal law, so.
Yeah. It is my intent that we'll have a decision before our town meeting, which next starts in November. If you weren't aware, we have one in November and one in late April, early May. And I assume you've already checked to make sure that it doesn't conflict with your current clients?
Yeah.
Fantastic. But our hope would be that we might have a decision before town meeting, but transition would happen after town meeting, so that you can have that opportunity to kind of sit in, see how it's working, what we're facing, then have an easy handoff. Because you're there to see it happen, and old council can tell you what has to happen as a transition.
Can I ask a question about that? Do you have experience with town meeting time and Robert's Rules, or one versus the other?
You want to field this one?
Yeah, we will never recommend a town adopt or use Robert's Rules. Never, never, do not.
Okay. So for a town that's already using Robert's Rules, what's your?
So then by default, you're familiar with the other one?
Town meeting time is the one that town should be using. Two of our lawyers of our seven partners actually were the co-authors of the latest edition. You'll find them in there. So, yeah, that's what you want. You want town meeting time. And I don't, I say that a bit facetiously, but in part, seriously, because Robert's Rules of Order are there to trick people. That's my sense as to what they're there. They're there to trip people up so they don't realize, oh, I call a point of order. Well, what does that really mean? Well, that wasn't a point of order, so I'm not going to recognize you. No, that's not what town meeting should be. And, you know, yes, town meeting time has lots of rules. It has main motions, subsidiary motions, amended motions, motions to reconsider, all that kind of stuff, which we will learn, as will your moderator, and we can guide people when they get off-piste. But I do not believe that Robert's Rules of Order are there to assist in the completion of town business in a comprehensive and cooperative way. That's my spiel about Robert's Rules. Sorry about that.
I was going to try to drag you into giving us a spiel, so thank you for preemptively giving it.
I've got a question. Where, within your firm, and maybe within your own expertise, where do you see Harrington Heap needing to go outside for some services? So I was part of a search committee eight years ago when we were moving from an in-house, full-time town council to outsourcing. And within that model, we had, we had to use, you know, outside counsel for labor, outside counsel for some land use, and then got a more full-service firm approach. So within your firm's expertise, where are some places where you either often refer out, or you sometimes just collaborate and partner as, you know, just you've teamed up on things, it's a complex issue? So what would those topics be? Would it be land use? Would it be? I'm assuming not CPA, but what else might?
Yeah, that would be one.
Yeah, bond counsel definitely comes to mind. If you're doing a borrowing, I think most firms, it's such a specialized area of the law, that not only are you in better hands with somebody who does it on a daily basis, but they're going to do it more efficiently than we can do it. So, and I think that every town that I have has outside bond counsel, and I think that's a pretty regular thing.
We do as well.
Yeah. Outside of that, you know, there's not too many things. We do land use, you have outside labor, we do labor. You know, it really, to me, it's, it would probably have to be some kind of complex regulatory proceeding that's not usual and requires some specialized expertise. And I say that, having come from the Attorney General's Office in the Administrative Law Division, doing complex regulatory, so I actually often do that for my clients when it comes to energy facilities and other things, but, you know, the law, you know, that sleepy vision of Mayberry with small-town government is gone. You guys are a complex organization, and I wouldn't dare to predict that you wouldn't run across something that was sort of a niche area that was complex that we couldn't do.
Environmental comes up with, you know, there's a variety of spots in town that were, you know, polluted with, you know, previous industrial use and transfers, you know, dumps and landfills, and that comes up wherever you dig a hole, it seems.
We've done brownfields, we've done 21E, we've done remediation of landfills. Some towns will have separate tax-taking council. We do that as well. Yes, you know, I think that the gaps that we used to have when we were a much smaller firm have been filled in.
Yeah.
So it's going to be, if there's a conflict, maybe with, but, yeah, not the general areas.
Because the budget is the budget, which whatever direction we go as a firm, and then there's likely to be outside bond counsel, likely to retain outside labor counsel. So just looking at sort of the package of potential legal costs, of which the primary would be our primary council. So that's a helpful answer.
I think that's one of the advantages of our firm. With 13 lawyers, the breadth of experience that we have, I think, should cover virtually anything that you're going to have as a question.
You've named three of your team in your packet. Very specifically, very frequently, the two of you and Ethan, is it?
Ethan, yep.
Okay. How often do you think you'd be drawing upon the other associates or partners or members of your firm? And would still be kind of a focus core group, or, you know, when would that happen, and how would it happen?
We're still going to be the focus core group. Ethan is really an expert on land use, so land use questions, I mean, both Brian and I do a lot of it as well, but that's pretty much all Ethan does these days. So land use in the first instance is probably going to go to him. I'm going to keep any kind of non-labor employment work myself. Brian, you got anything?
I'm the backup. I'm also a litigator, so if that comes in.
Yep. Litigation, we both started in litigation, so that's our background.
I think you guys have cleared the transmission line project now that came from Woburn, so, you know.
This version.
This version. Well, if something else like that comes down the pipe, I do that. I actually was special counsel in Woburn for that project, so.
It's coming again.
Okay.
You're up, Brian.
Does that mean you know how to put the, yeah, the spur to ever-source, and?
I think most people are still trying to discover that, just because the DPU and the FSB are so favorable to the utilities, but I certainly have represented cities and towns before both state entities, familiar with those procedures, done that work. We've done the best we can do. You know, it's a, I'm not going to lie to you, it's tough sledding, because those, I mean, look, as the now-retired Ray Miara's, who we just covered, always used to love to tell clients, "Energy Facility Siting Board." It's right there in their name, what they do. They cite facilities, they don't deny them. So it can be tough, but, yeah, if we need to do it, we'll do it.
Sure. And when you mention land use, can you just elaborate on what you mean when you say that? Because obviously, it can cover so many different topics.
It does.
And we have a lot of different questions on that, in that realm.
I mean, just name it. So first, let's break it in between town land and private land, which the town is regulating. So town land, pretty much, actually, I forgot to look at zoning bylaw for this purpose, but some zoning bylaws will exempt town land from the controls of the zoning bylaw. Most of our towns don't do that. So you could be in the position of town land going before a town board to get approval for something. But for land use, we are talking the gamut. We are talking about zoning bylaw amendments. Everybody's just gone through MBTA Communities Act, which we're now ad nauseam about that. But now we're all dealing with HLC, which HLC is proposing regulations, they are controlling developments, they are very much hands-on. For all that it's a new, small state board, they are quite aggressive in their communications and their dealings with communities. So we're having meetings with HLC. Before you got into the whole HLC thing, of course, you had 40Bs. So you have 40Bs that both will go before the Superior Court, if that's the butters are challenging it there, which we've done, or you're going before HAC, because the developer doesn't like what the board has.
Sorry, the HLC, you're talking about the Executive Office of Housing?
Yes.
Okay. So, and 40B goes under what entity?
The HAC, the Housing Appeals Committee, if it's an appeal of the developer. If it's the butters, it's going to go to Superior Court or Land Court.
So when you mentioned the executive office is very aggressive, would you mind just giving us a sense of what you're talking about there?
Two of our partners have recently met with HLC to consider where a development is going to go into the district, and HLC is pretty much telling them to the town, no, this is what you're going to do. We're pushing back at it as best we can, but that's where I say they're being aggressive. They're not working in a manner that you'd really hope is collaboratively as you'd like to see. And I hope nobody from HLC is right now listening.
Too late.
I'll fix the.
I'll fix the...
Represent your client, not the HLC.
And in fairness to them, I've worked with them too. We did have issues in some other towns. They can be spoken to. I think one thing to be prepared for with that is they, as much as elected officials at the state level love to tell you that they stand ready, willing, and able to help us do this, HLC is severely understaffed to meet this need. And I think that's a big problem too. And probably something towns should take note of is that you can push back and then it feels like it's going into oblivion and you don't hear anything else. Or you can ask for comments on something you propose and then, you know, town meeting is coming on before you get them back. So, you know, the staff level, they're quite approachable, but they take orders from people above, and I think those are the real aggressors. And it's difficult.
I think in general, what we're noticing with land use is at the state level, the state is pulling back on the sense that it should be locally controlled.
Oh, yeah.
We are seeing more and more statutes come down. I mean, we've all seen them over the last five years, and they're still going to come, where they are going to say, yeah, no, this is, has to be permitted as of right. We've seen that happen a lot recently. Or the other thing that's happened recently is, yeah, you still have some local control, but if the development or this bylaw is going to allow some kind of mixed use or an accessory dwelling unit, that's going to pass by majority. It's no longer going to need a two-thirds. So those kinds of pullbacks from local control are disconcerting to those of us who represent municipal interests. But that's the way the tide is going, I think.
Absolutely.
Approximately, how many 40Bs have you guys handled?
A lot.
A lot. I don't know.
Don't you need to email Chris Heap?
But he, Chris Heap not here right now, but I assume if there was a sticky wicket we had, he's still available if you needed to call upon his experience?
Well, go with the, to Ethan first, who's also done them. So yeah, that's one of the reasons why we've connected Ethan to Winchester is because he's the land use expert for that as well.
I think last week, he was just in some 40B hearings for one of our towns, so he couldn't go to my ZBA meeting, so I had to cover it.
Yeah, and we have a number of 40B projects happening, and I think they're all friendly right now, weren't they?
Correct. I would say so.
Cross Street, Washington Swanton are the two active ones. And Waterfield.
Yeah, the friendly 40Bs are the best.
Preactive.
Yeah, so with that, how do you see town council helping 40Bs stay friendly and helping them actually get done so that we don't just have these vacant lots that are standing there for years and years?
It starts a lot with the staff. So we try to encourage the developers to meet with the staff and discuss what the needs are of the town, what the concerns of the town have been for other 40Bs. And really, they try to come up with a preliminary plan before they ever get to the ZBA. So for 40Bs, that's what we have found to be successful. Sometimes the developers will come before you and try to say, you know, we have this plot of land, or we're thinking of buying this parcel of land, and we're kind of thinking of a 40B, but maybe we could work out some kind of cluster development that you might be more amenable to. Those preliminary conversations help a lot. They really work out the kinks so that you do end up with a friendly 40B.
Okay.
Anthony, Mike?
Can I pull back to town meeting? We kind of talked about town meeting a little bit, but you mentioned you're a glutton for punishment. What would be your approach to sort of your role in town meeting and how would you manage incoming questions or areas where, you know, where council is needed? Because I think that may have mentioned, but our town meeting members are, can get very fired up about things and really look for, they look for guidance.
You want me to start?
You can start.
Yeah, sure. No, I mean...
I'm starting too many.
I mean, look, town meeting is like your Super Bowl and like any, you know, good game day...
Like Phil.
What'd you say?
Like Phil's, Phil's...
You're the moderator.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, I hope Phil's watching.
Well, like any good game day execution, like most of it...
That's true.
Most of it comes before, you know, like I, you know, I'm Cleveland Browns fan, so I don't watch a winning football team.
I'm sorry.
I have watched the Patriots as I've lived up here.
Tribe of Lions. Just they're a little better.
You know, and I've seen the Belichickian way when, you know, and it was all preparation. It's, you know, the way the teams were prepared translated on the field. And it really, you know, I'm beating the analogy now, but it is true for town meeting. You know, having council involved early to talk about what you're trying to accomplish and understand the articles and understand the motions, and just making sure you're prepared is 90% of the battle for town meeting. And it's, you know, not just answering legal questions, you know, sort of narrowly, it's understanding, you know, you're going to have a pretty good sense of what's going to be controversial, what are going to be the concerns, and it's preparing to be able to speak to that too. Is town council, you know, it's the moderator show at town meeting. The moderator runs the show, and I generally try to take a, you know, pretty backseat approach unless they need me. But I'm always happy to the extent that town meeting needs a legal opinion or a discussion or something else about what's going on with an article, to provide that and to provide it in plain English and not in legalese so that, you know, most of town meeting can actually understand it. That really is my main approach to it, is, you know, prepare often and early, talk with, you know, staff, elected officials, appointed officials, like, you know, what are the hot-button articles? What are going to be the concerns? Where are we seeing the community voice those concerns? You know, in particular, if there's articles that, you know, are going to be controversial, you know, the town probably wants to consider, and whether you want town council there or not, at least tell us, is what a prior town manager that I worked with called socializing the articles, getting it out into the community, getting that feedback early, making sure we don't get questions that we don't expect at town meeting, to the greatest extent that we can control that. I do think it is a rule for town meeting that there will always be one article that we think is completely non-controversial, and then suddenly it explodes in our face. But, you know, we can deal with that. Our goal is to make sure that it's just one and that we're ready for the other ones that come up. And, you know, we understand the community concerns on them. So that's kind of how I approach it. You know, it really is a lot of preparation so that we can run as smoothly as possible on town meeting floor, where we have limited time, you know, limited resources, and where, you know, we really are not there to be sort of calling last-minute balls and strikes on legal issues. We're there to foster discussion amongst the community within those guidelines so that you, as policymakers, can decide what's best for your community.
You'll still wind up calling balls and strikes, though. I can assure you.
It does indeed start way early. We want to be involved in the drafting of the warrant. We want to be involved in the drafting of the motions. We will have discussions with the moderator beforehand as to how he's going to handle a consent agenda. One thing that communities deal with very differently from one another is how they handle CPC projects. Do they list them all off at once and then ask for holds, or do they vote on each one separately from the beginning? Those are the kinds of things that we like to sort out beforehand. It makes town meeting go much more smoothly.
There will be times when somebody, maybe me, I have an idea for an article in the spring. It might be completely insane, it might be unsupported, I've done my best to look into it. But let's say you have a different opinion. How are you going to handle a situation where either myself, another member of this board, a member of the public comes to you looking to do something, and in your opinion, it's just straight-up unlawful?
I'm going to tell you that. Hopefully, I'm going to give you the basis for why I think that, and I will convince you that that is the case. But if I'm not able to convince you of that and you want to go forward, like I said at the beginning, all I can do is recommend. So if you want to go ahead and do something, I will warn you that if it is a general or zoning bylaw, you're going to have to get by the municipal law unit after town meeting votes for it. So very often what happens in that case is the lawyers in the municipal law unit, who we all know very, very well, will call us up and say, I got to warn you, I'm going to disapprove this bylaw for this reason. And we're going to say, yes, I understand.
I have some budget questions, unless anybody has a general thing before we get into the numbers.
I have one more.
Go, please.
We, Michelle mentioned, we have a lot of waterways and land, and just curious, in terms of like conservation, and maybe it's as it relates to land use, but any particular experience or somebody who would sort of take charge in that area?
So we've certainly drafted a lot of conservation restrictions. We've dealt with the state on getting those through. There was a fairly recent modification of the whole Article 97, how that is handled, how land is brought out of Article 97, and what you have to do in order to make up for that loss. So I think we certainly can handle anything that comes up having to do with conservation land, park land, how it can be used. Can it be used for passive recreation? Can it be used for active recreation? All of those things will go into the particular draft of the conservation restriction that you adopt.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Donna, Brian. That's been very helpful. What do you see, you guys represent a lot of varied communities and have a lot of experience. What do you see as kind of the biggest issue on the horizon for municipalities that maybe you didn't see a few years ago? Is there anything in particular that you see that communities are facing that's a little bit newer?
Certainly, the state interjection in local land use, I'd say, has got to be the biggest.
Okay.
I mean, I think the whole, it had been coming slowly and in fact, somewhat under the radar, where some developers have been putting in some chapters, like 40Y, that sort of snuck in that none of the communities knew about. But then 3A and MBTA communities just blew up, and now I think everybody is a lot more sensitive to it. We've been trying to encourage our Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, as well as the Mass Municipal Association, to get more proactive with the legislature because, quite honestly, the municipal viewpoint has not been well-represented in the bills that are going through the legislature. For example, when 3A went through, they talked about all the people they talked to and with 16 different groups, one of which was a town, had a town outlook. So we think there's more work to be done in that area, but at this point, it is an uphill battle, given the way the town, the state is going.
Yeah, it seems like it.
I would add to that, too. I don't know how much of a demand there is for ADUs in this town, accessory dwelling units, but that's sort of like the next partner to MBTA communities. I've certainly, it depends on the town where I've seen that be a big issue, you know, particularly coastal towns, people want to build ADUs and, you know, they can't use them for short-term rentals. We know they probably really are trying to do that. So that's an issue. One other thing that I've seen a lot of, and I think it's flown under the radar quite a bit, is the state's interpretation now of the Dover Amendment when it comes to solar facilities. That amendment was enacted...
Can you just give us the background there?
Yeah, so the Dover Amendment is kind of an exemption to zoning. So what it basically says is, is that for like solar panels, it's very difficult for us to deny them. They're not typically subject to normal zoning, they're just subject to reasonable regulation as to like...
These are utility-scale zoning or zoning panel, the solar panels on people's roofs?
No, it's more utility scale, so like a large, it can be both, but it really comes into play when we talk about more of the facilities, the large-scale facilities. You know, so like a solar farm or something like that. We've kind of known about that for years. I think municipalities have adapted to that pretty well. But we've seen a very aggressive interpretation from the state. This is kind of the theme of tonight, as we're talking, is an aggressive interpretation of the state, that now things like battery facilities that aren't directly connected to the solar panels, but, you know, basically time shift electrons, if you will, from the grid, so they collect them during non-peak hours and then put them back out in peak hours, are somehow also exempt from local zoning because...
It's part of the solar system, they're saying, the solar...
They're trying to say it's part, they're trying to say it facilitates the collection of solar energy, which is what triggers the Dover Amendment. I'm a skeptic on that. And I will tell you that in the real world, where this plays out, is that people who live in zoning districts who don't expect like a battery facility to be sited next to them, all of a sudden find out, well, it's not in allowed use in this zoning facility, but it's exempt from that restriction under the Dover Amendment because the state says so. Even though there's no solar panels here, there's nothing that we would traditionally think as collecting solar energy, just this collection of batteries, where a lot of people are concerned with lithium-ion batteries because it's rare, but when they catch on fire, it's a big deal, that these things are just sort of popping up. And, you know, I have represented a private group where that happened in one town where they live next to a church, and the church was having financial problems. And so the church wanted to lease out a corner of its property to one of these facilities. You know, we managed in a collaborative effort to represent them before that planning board and to sign a broker-in-agreement with the church to off-road that and not have the problem. But I think that the point remains that I think we're going to see these things popping up a lot more. They're not going to be subject to our traditional zoning requirements. And if or when something pops up in Winchester, you very likely may hear from the neighbors like, wait a minute, how is this battery that has, doesn't have any solar panels on it, doesn't collect energy itself, suddenly get to take advantage of this exemption and just be next to me? With very different profile than solar panels that don't make noise, whereas the air conditioners for lithium-ion batteries definitely do make noise, and has a very different risk profile than those panels. So that's something I've seen in my experience too.
So I'll just note, Steve Delaney, our acting town manager, has joined. I'm not sure he has any questions for you, but we're just going to acknowledge him versus he just walks in quietly, so there's that.
Glad you're quiet.
Don't be shy, Steve. So you started when, by introducing the fact that you'd updated this budget table of various towns. And I know I want to focus on at least two of these. You pointed out yourself that at least for FY '25, you've kept under budget with all towns but one. And you had an explanation why for this one town, it looks like you're about $62,000 over budget.
Yeah, for that one, I really, that is not one of my towns, so I don't have an explanation for that other than litigation, but I can't give you the details of that litigation because I wasn't involved in that. Do you happen to know Norfolk?
No, I don't do a lot for Norfolk. I can just say happily when I saw that table that all three of my primary towns are under budget.
Which, what are your primary towns?
Situette, Hopkinton, and Bourne. It's a nice discovery for me tonight.
Yeah, and I can, you know, from my personal experience, litigation budgets are wildly unpredictable, so...
It does happen from time to time, and I think, you know, we always try to stay in budget. I think that table heart hopefully reflects that. Litigation is unpredictable, and in the event that you're going to have an overrun, I think the key is, is that it's not a surprise. Like you don't get bombed with a huge overrun in a bill that you didn't expect, and that's where communication is important. You know, sometimes you can't avoid it, but you really want those off-years to be anomalies tied to a specific event and not something that's more systemic and happening from year to year.
To be clear, this is all in, this is not litigation-specific?
That's everything.
That's everything. What percent of this is litigation? Very small, I assume.
Honestly, it changes year to year and town to town. But yes, I'd say, actually, we're doing more litigation these days than we have in the past. A lot of it is land use litigation, but litigation is probably about, I don't know, 30 to 35%, 40% of what we do now.
That sounds about right.
So if there's a, if there's a client on here that spent $100,000 or another one that spent $200,000, would it be fair to assume across all of them, a third of that spend is litigation?
No, not across for all of them. I mean, some of our towns have virtually no litigation.
Okay.
The ones that had virtually no litigation suddenly have three ZBA appeals in one. The ones that had virtually no litigation suddenly have three ZBA appeals in one year, I mean, it, it really is, I mean, our towns are pretty well-run, for the most part, like I'm very impressed with their decision-making, they usually consult us early, but at the end of the day, we can't, you know, they have to make the decisions that are right for them, and we can't control who may appeal. So, I can tell you with confidence in my towns, that, you know, I'm aware of what's going on, it's certainly an informed decision and knowledgeable, if there's a potential for an appeal, that it may happen, and we are always in a discussion, in a, you know, proceeding that may result in an appeal. Are we doing this properly, is there a way to sort of find a compromise or something like that? And even during litigation, it's like, okay, we started, now is there an off-ramp to this? I, you know, I grew up a litigator, and I think anybody who grew up a litigator as a lawyer will tell you, that litigators, for the most part, understand that, you know, the people are happy, I guess, when they win, but they're not ecstatic, because you still lost, like you still had to spend the money.
Yeah.
And every dollar you spend on litigation is a dollar you're not spending on a school, you're not spending on a road, you're not spending on a park, and so, sometimes you have to spend those dollars, but I really, really try to keep that spend to a minimum, and always sort of have the, you know, the viewpoint, that whatever came before is a sunk cost, we're at today, is there a different path that takes us off this road?
Are either of you a primary counsel for Wellesley?
I do a ton of work for Wellesley, but the primary is Tom Harrington.
Okay, well, maybe you can speak to this, because Wellesley is a town that we like to compare ourselves to a whole lot.
Mm-hmm.
I also see it's the largest budget that you have on here. Can you give us any insight into how that number came to be the Wellesley budget, you know, why is it so much larger than many of these other towns?
They do give us a ton of work, I mean, Wellesley has a ton that goes on, so, but Wellesley does, for the most part, control their litigation through their executive director, their equivalent to the town manager, and she is knowledgeable about all of the requests that come to our firm for, for legal advice. But there are some, I mean, I, I get calls directly from the council on aging, the library trustees will call us directly, the plant, town planner will call Ethan directly, so we do get communications directly from staff, but when we respond, we will respond and copy the executive director on it. But it is simply a function of the work that they have that's going on.
Do either of you represent, you mentioned Hopkinton, that you do represent, do either of you represent Needham or Reading?
I do a ton of work for Reading. Needham tends to be all done by Chris Heap in our office, who is the primary for Needham, although I negotiated the new town manager's employment contract for the town, since it was better not to have Chris do that, since he was gonna be doing all the work with her. But, so, yes, I've done a ton of work for Reading as well. Reading, I am their labor counsel, so I get calls virtually every day from them on labor and employment questions.
Now, I think in your, in your letter, if I read it correctly, and I might not have, you tend to do hourly billings, do you have any clients that you do a flat fee arrangement with?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what the retainer is supposed to represent?
Correct.
Okay. And, and why, why is it that you, it seems, lean heavily towards the hourly approach, instead of a flat fee approach?
I think it's mostly client-driven, you know, I think flat fees, they're increasingly becoming more common, you know, we've had most of our clients for a long time, and so we started out with that arrangement, and they're comfortable with that. I also think that, you know, some towns, they prefer hourly rates, they prefer the ability to sort of control legal spend on a month-to-month basis, they don't necessarily want or desire the predictability that a flat fee arrangement has, but I do think we are seeing more of that, the flat fees, and maybe, my guess would be that that's a function that government is increasingly a complex venture, as, you know, we all know, town budgets are getting larger and larger, it's, it's predictability is a good thing often, and, you know, it's a good thing for both the town and a law firm, when it's managed well. You know, I can speak to the fact that Hopkinton is a flat fee, and it's been a flat fee for a long time, so, you know, that's not an alien proposition to me, and they can, they can work very well with good communication and good expectations on both sides, because again, they do give you that month-to-month predictability on what your legal spend is. But that's, to just start where we began, it really is mostly client-driven, I don't know that we necessarily prefer one or the other, it's really up to you, and we're happy to go in either direction.
I mean, the town has had both in the last, you know, 15 years, flat fee, most recently retainer, but to your point, Donna, there's still some level of gatekeeping that should happen with the town manager, or if it's okay with the board and with the manager, that, you know, library can call directly, and this group can call directly, and that, not just for, even with a flat fee, there's availability, there's prioritization, there's, you're taking calls from these three groups, we really want you working on this contractor, this LDA, right? So, there's still a degree of gatekeeping that we need to do-
Right.
-even if we're not concerned about, geez, we've billed our 127th hour this month, and we don't wanna go over 130, so.
One thing that you will get from us is on our invoices, our monthly invoices, if we're on a retainer, we show you what the actual hours are that we worked, and what the value of those actual hours are. So, every month, you can see, are you getting more legal services than you're paying for, or are you getting fewer? And over a period of several months, or a year, you can say, you know what, this, this retainer arrangement really isn't working, you guys, you law firm are making out a whole lot better than we town are, so we wanna, you know, reconsider the arrangement, and we do that as well.
Yeah. So, it's, we have about four minutes left, I wanna just give either select board a chance to do any last questions, and we'll certainly let you wrap up, but I just wanna be mindful of time.
In 30 seconds or less, what is Ollie's Law, and should we incorporate it here?
Do you like your dogs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, what was the question?
It was specifically referenced in their letter, about whether the town had interest in adopting Ollie's Law, and so, I'm curious what it is. If she called it out in her letter.
Yeah, so, it has to do with kennels and dogs licenses, and it's, it's just another bylaw, if you wanna do it, but it was just a fun thing to throw in there for dogs.
Okay.
Nothing special.
We pressed those buttons.
I'm impressed no one's taking the bait. I'm gonna leave it there.
We only have three minutes.
Leave it there. Thank you.
Do you guys have anything you wanna ask us in closing here, or final arguments?
What have you found to be most helpful to get from your town council on a day-to-day basis?
I think you've hit upon some of this, from my perspective, there's nothing more important than being prepared in advance through good communication, which means you're talking to all the people who you need to talk to, getting all the facts that you need to have, getting all the opinions that you need to consider when coming to a final conclusion, and then making sure that it is understood and broadcast to everybody who needs to have it, and documented in a way that there's no confusion. Legal advice is very confusing, and turning it into a game of telephone, either in the way the information's funneled to you to make an opinion, or the way you broadcast it back out, so that we can act upon it, is one of the places where I think a lawyer can either be the most efficient and the most helpful, or the least efficient and cause the most problems. So, making sure that that can happen, and with it, it gives us trust in you, it gives our residents, our town meeting, trust in us, and also in you, is one of the key places to really focus. And if that means that you have to stand up and say that we don't make sense, or we're not giving you the information that you need, or there are things that we're not even considering, that you need to make sure that we know are out there as possible options, that's where we need counsel who's gonna stand up and make sure we're getting that, incorporating it into our decisions.
I would say, I think, sometimes, you know, active troubleshooting with us, you know, we are maybe approaching something that is new territory for us, is a little bit more complicated, and if it's just a black and white, no, you can't do this, or, you know, yes, you can, then it's not helpful, sometimes it's good to hear from council, you know, we had this same issue in another community, and here's how we dealt with it, or maybe if you try it this way, and yet you cut this out of the Warren article, you do that, maybe it's cleaner to do, like, that kind of stuff, I think, is helpful for us, because, you know, we, we need some of, you know, some of that direction sometimes, and some legal support.
And I'm gonna piggyback on that with Mike, because I was thinking two things, kind of responsiveness, obviously, you know, I can't speak for the other four board members, so I'm not texting our attorneys at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night, but it's, it could wait till the morning, but just understanding that there's something that's time-sensitive, can we get an answer, and can some one of your colleagues get back, right? So, I'd say responsiveness, and to Mike's point around, you know, just collaborating with us, and also with, within your firm with other towns, we don't know what we don't know, we don't know what's easier, you know, what's the hard path, what's the happy path, what's the most successful path, those could be three very different approaches, and we need your expertise within the firm, within other towns, of, you know, hey, this, this lawyer somewhere else did something similar, what can we leverage, what can we learn? I think that's incredibly important to getting to a good outcome in the shortest time possible.
I think also, just to hit on the communication piece, and I, we have two lawyers, and we have three not lawyers on our board, so, being able to bridge the technical, non-technical language is helpful, and having that clear point back to like statute or precedent or whatnot, that can sort of give the answer to, give an answer to the five of us, that the five of us can kind of sit with.
Yeah.
It's helpful.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice conversation.
Yeah, and if you have follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out.
Same here.
Just call Bill.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
And we have questions for you, who knows?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Don't trip.
Nice to see you.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
First of all, he's sick. All right, so, I'm gonna call on Matt Beck, there we hit, we're expecting EverSource tonight, Matt? At 7:45?
Probably.
Okay, usually, usually we see Jackie kind of right here, right now, so, we'll just go right through, and we'll do the public hearing at 7:45, which is fine. So, Steve, if you're ready, if you wanna do some highlights with the town manager's report, and then we'll kind of move through the agenda there.
Okay.
I'll note our next couple of meetings that are on, that are on the published agenda Monday, next Monday, the 6th, and then Monday, the 20th, there's a holiday on the 13th, so we're gonna skip that. But I'll turn it over to Steve Delaney, who's here for his first in-person meeting with us, as the acting town manager, so welcome.
Okay, thank you. On staff appointments, we have a DPW school custodian, Robert Call, and we'd made this appointment, and I would request that the select board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
That we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Robert Call to the DPW school custodian.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, in accordance with National Law, Chapter 40, Section 80, you've made the following appointments and reappoints, appointments to the Archives Advisory Committee and the Disability Access Commission. To the Archives Advisory Committee, Samuel Smallridge, reappointment term to expire March 31, 2028, Nancy Schrock and Christian Romero, appointment terms to expire March 31, 2027. And to the Disability Access Commission, Lisa Montrodola and Christine Rowan, appoint to regular position terms to expire August 31, 2028, and Consuelo Donald Donahue, appoint to alternate position term to expire August 31, 2028.
Thanks for those folks for volunteering, and thanks, Steve, for making those appointments.
Okay. Do you wanna take a look at general topics that I had?
Do we need to waive the 15-day period?
Nope, those are, for those reappointments, those are town manager appointments.
Great.
So, those are, we met the folks, some of them-
Perfect, it just, the way it's structured on the memo, it looked like we did, no worries.
Okay. So, I had a couple other topics, you'll see in your packet, just as updates, fire department staffing, as you know, we have several open positions on the fire department, I believe there's six that are open, we are struggling to fill those positions, in part due to the model that we have for recruitment, which includes firefighter-perimedic model that is used as part of our staffing, and emergency services, ALS services on our ambulance. So, we've called for several lists, so we're working on that, lists are available, but applicants are not plentiful, so, just wanna let you know that we are trying, I know that there's, staffing shortages don't help morale, so we're working hard to see if we can get to that point where we can bring some folks in, and it may mean an adjustment in how we approach this, to try and get candidates in, but just wanted to give you that update. Assistant town manager, I am requesting your support to retain a retiring assistant town manager, Mark Too Good, for some level of part-time assistance, likely some amount, probably up to 20 hours, for some period of time during this interim period. His assistants over these past several weeks have been great, and as you know, he's officially retired as of last week, so this would continue on as an interim basis, and I would ask for your support on that, that I can negotiate a contract with Mark, to keep him on during this interim period.
Do you need a specific motion for that, or just general authors, you have one ready to go?
Yeah.
Move that we authorize the town, the interim town manager to move forward, working out the details of an employment arrangement with Mark Too Good, with our town council's assistants.
Second.
So, we can open up for debate, but having worked with Steve over the last few weeks, and we've been checking in on, you know, sort of all of the things, and Steve, can you join us on September 10th? And one of the first things I asked was to, you know, as he was getting the lay of the land, he knew Mark's retirement date was coming up, what did he see as the need, what might, what role might Mark fill, and, you know, even as recently as Friday, there's, as we all know, there's a lot of procurements that go on, there's contracts happening, we're hiring solar consultants and the like, there is a replacement starting for the project manager position, there will be a replacement starting for the procurement position, but there's still, you know, the work didn't slieze from, from Friday to today, and Steve has identified that need for Mark to stay, I agree, there's a lot to do, I've heard from other folks in Town Hall, concerned about keeping all the wheels moving, so, I will just endorse that, I spoke with Mark myself last week, and there's a motion, there's a second, I think there's clearly a demonstrated need, and I'll let anybody else weigh in if they wish, and then I'll call the vote.
What's the scope and timeframe, because I know that we had discussed that in the past as well?
My guess is that it would be through part of December, I don't know if it's the first part or middle part, but I believe one of the documents that I saw talked about the first part of December.
Okay.
So, through town meeting and to the beginning of that budget construction?
Yes, yes.
And would it be, you know, the scope of it more around capital, you know, process procurement?
It depends on the need, you know, for example, during this period, the goal line is getting town meeting.
Right.
So, and the next phase would be focused on budget development that needs to happen shortly thereafter, in the meantime, the procurement issues, and, you know, it, there are so many different projects that Mark has the institutional knowledge, if you will, and can save me probably hours of trying to research that, he knows it, so it varies. So, there's two major areas, but in addition, it's the day-to-day projects that we have both been working on over the last month or so.
Thank you.
Paris, any question, comment?
No.
Okay, Bill, Anthea, I know you made the motion, but, okay, all right, so then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Couple other things we're working on, Wedgmere Station parking facilities, at the Wedgmere Station, we have an agreement with DCR, we basically maintain the lot, we get a portion of the fees, and they're- the lot. We get a portion of the fees and they're asking for a 10-year renewal of the lease. It has been, I think, five years and it's gone in renewal pieces over the last several years. We're in the process of reviewing that. I'm meeting tomorrow with DPW folks to kind of see, is this a good deal in terms of how it's arranged and looking at how this has been put together? What's the impact if we, if we don't do the extension? And my hunch is there's a lot of commuters who use that lot that would not be pleased. So we're very sensitive to that aspect. So I just want to let you know that we're working on that in terms of trying to figure out what the best route is here because it just dropped on my desk with a, with a request to extend it. So before it goes anywhere, I wanted to make sure we understand it. So also, the Morocco Culvert project, as we wait, as Christmas approaches, we also wait for a gift from the MBTA to give us the agreement that can push this project forward. We've been promised and promised. We're trying to push it and see if we can get it so that we can at least get this project moving. We still don't have it in hand at this point, that permit piece that we're looking for. So we're on it. Matt has been helping me try to bird dog this thing too, so, and we will have a new project manager coming in to actually get involved in that too. So the last thing I had for you on this piece was the Cambridge Street Waterline project that Public Works is putting together will probably need to be rebid because there were a couple of sections on it that were problematic as the bids were reviewed. Bob's hope to, in Public Works is to have this out to bid and under construction this fall. We'll see what happens. We'll keep you posted because I know the folks in that area would, are concerned as to how that project goes. So that's where we are.
Nice. So to the extent that the Morocco Culvert MBTA license agreement, I know you updated us last week. I know you're bird dogging them. So, but if we need to call our state rep or delegation, you know, you certainly, you're empowered to do so. And so, you know, I think Rep Day has been, both he and Senator Lewis are very familiar with the years of work on that project. So let's, let's not hesitate. We, you know, we had a license agreement. I think this board approved a license agreement in August when Beth was here. You know, we approved it in substantial form. And so the fact that we're a month plus out and, and the form that we approved is really unchanged. We just, you know, authorized to sign. We're ready to go. So let's get that going because we're running into, you know, we don't want to get into the winter and weather and.
Understood.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so it's 7:42. I don't, is anybody here from public comment? Okay. So I will take those two members of public comment. Mr. Marky was here first, but I'll invite folks to the table. And then if EverSource, if we can start the public hearing about 7:48, if that's okay, we'll just take, public comment cannot exceed three minutes. So come on up.
Thank you. And I hope to take only two and a half.
Well, that's fine. I won't even start my timer then.
Good evening. My name's Ruth Trimarky. I'm a Winchester resident living at 11 Ridge Street. I'm here tonight to highlight two new climate resilience projects that reduce climate change risks. Here in Winchester, climate risks include fire, drought, heat, flooding, extreme storms, and pests like ticks, rats, and insects that destroy trees. These risks affect property values, health, and quality of life. How well we manage them impacts Winchester's strong AA bond ratings from Moody's, which is a reflection of how well we manage risk. I'll first highlight this fire prevention brochure, which was designed by our fire chief, Steve Osborne, and the staff. And thanks to an ANCA grant, 8,000 copies went out in our recent water bills and 14,000 more are going to be distributed. They're in English, Chinese, and large font. Wildfires in Winchester increased 1,200% last October 24, making this brochure particularly timely. Second, in collaboration with our Assistant Town Planner, Ian Sexton, Winchester Trails, which is a private organization, just released a digital trails guide, which is based on this, which is an old favorite in town. It's now on the conservation and recreation websites, thanks to those departments. With more frequent high heat days causing bacterial blooms that close beaches, there's a growing need for informed access to alternative outdoor recreational options. Lastly, here are an additional 24 climate resilience actions drawn from and inspired by nine of our existing municipal plans, including the Winchester Master Plan and All Hazards Mitigation Plan. Those actions range from splash pads, safer biking routes, tree canopy and wetlands protection, and improved parks and cooling centers. I've included an interactive map suggesting locations for each action area. And tonight, I'm going to ask you to allocate $5,000 for a communications consultant to launch a PR campaign on the interrelated risks of fire, heat, and drought. Town government alone cannot comprehensively reduce the town's risk of climate impacts. We need our informed residents to share the responsibility of managing Winchester's climate risks and choosing this outreach campaign as a good strategic action. So thank you. I'm happy to answer questions and I will also email you. And here's a paper copy of those I lifted out of the interactive map, the text, so that you don't have to click on each button. You can read it like that if you'd like. So it's nice to meet you.
I think we probably need to digest it. This ready for us?
Where'd you get more of those pamphlets?
It's out of print. That's why we, we updated it and put it digitally. You're welcome to borrow this if you'd like.
I want to hand them out to the Cub Scouts.
Ah, there's only about 10 that I'm aware of in existence.
I'll try to call for my own. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks, Ruth. Good to see you.
Sure.
Okay. Come on up. If you could state your name for the record?
I'm Todd Gulick. I live at 47 Everett Avenue with my wife, Paula Kinnon. We've been there 32 years. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. I'm here in part to say that, or to discuss the project under consideration, the culvert under Everett Avenue near its western terminus, near Cambridge Street. I'm here primarily to say that I join with two of the other abutters, the Norworthies at 53 Everett and the Sarnies at 54 Everett, in agreeing to a temporary easement, but also to object strongly to the proposal of a permanent easement for work on this easement, on this culvert. And that said, we have not yet seen any language from town council regarding the specifics of either a proposed permanent or temporary easement. So to some extent, I would say that our, my agreement to a temporary easement is conditioned on actually being able to see what's proposed. Two other points, one or both will be highlighted in a letter I'll submit subsequently. One has to do with process here. It's never been clear to, I think, any of the abutters exactly who was driving this project. Our contact was with Meg White, the project manager, and with Matt Schuman. But a great deal of the communications had to do, for example, with easements. And that seemed peculiar, given that stormwater is being dumped onto our properties, our private properties, from public and private properties. And easements can be somewhat complex. The law matters and it was surprising not to have those communications come from the board, the town manager, town council, or something. No disrespect meant to Mr. Schuman, but I don't understand why he was the point person on easements. And in general, the process, I believe, disrespected the abutters in general. The second thing is the wisdom of spending this kind of money on this project at this point. I don't understand why, under the circumstances, the directive was for a, sort of a minimal project that accounted for public safety, but then an exploration of the wider issues because the fact of the matter is this culvert is far too small for the water that's directed to it. The head wall is decaying because it functions as a dam during heavy storms and the street floods. So I believe that there has to be an opportunity to use the money more wisely to examine the root causes of the deterioration that's happening here and address public safety and other concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. And you will follow up with a letter, you said?
Yeah, I wrote one and I was going to leave it at that, but it turned out to be four pages.
Okay. You can email that to the town manager's office. Thank you.
I'll do that, thank you.
Okay. So now we'd like to call the public hearing to order for an EverSource grant of location for Main Street to install approximately 58 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way in Main Street and to provide electric service to 585 Main Street. And while we do know you, if you could just say your names for the record?
Jackie Duffy EverSource.
Matt Schuman, town engineer.
Thank you. So usually, I think, Matt, you start and then, or do you want to have Adam here?
Well, I can just tell you, we want to install approximately 58 feet of conduit in Main Street to provide electric service to 585 Main Street. There were some questions that Matt had sent to us and I had given him all the answers.
So I'll let you know the questions I asked and the answers since they may be of interest to you. I asked, how long would the work take? Since this is Main Street, it's in front of a bunch of businesses. And EverSource had responded, two days. Will the sidewalk be open at the end of the day as well as the road? Yes, we will backfill and hot-top. No open trench at the end of the day. Will you be restoring the brick sidewalk? Yes, we will be restoring the brick sidewalk. Will you abandon the old service? As this is, there is obviously underground service there now because all the utilities are underground. So they're actually putting in a new service and they'll be abandoning the old service. Number of parking spaces, they, they will probably be two to four spaces that they'll need to occupy because they're going from one side of the street to the other side of the street. And then finally, we haven't discussed this with the police chief yet, but there is the option of doing night work in this area or late, late hours because again, we are in front of some businesses and we have some parking impacts. So that's... So they do have to...
That would be after the police chief.
Yeah, they do have to cross the street. I don't think they would do a full closure of, of the street, but they would have to, usually they work in sections. So they'll, you know, they would have to work the detail.
So one lane would probably be open for the two cats to go through.
We would also work with the police department on whether there are any other restrictions for work hours, regardless of whether we do night work or not.
Okay. I'm going to get back to the night work question, but go ahead, Mike.
No questions?
So is the source right now, it's the other side of Main Street closer to Burger's Bagels and it's got to come across over next door to Alani's Grill? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So if we did night work, and we did, we approved night work as a board and the town manager did with the T for, you know, certain work at night on the MBTA center station, what would those hours normally be? Would they be seven to midnight? Would they be seven to seven if, if the police chief and EverSource requested? What would a normal night shift be?
There's probably some flexibility on the part.
Yeah. It all depends on what the police chief really wants to do.
And then how much, like in terms of lighting and things for neighbors, what's the notice if it's going to be a night project? Do we need to notify? Because there are some apartments above those businesses, above, you know, pliables and then further up the street toward Vine Street. Is there some notification? I'm just thinking there's going to be some bright lights to be able to be effective at midnight.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we could work with EverSource on some notification for, for nearby abutters.
Okay. And when do you hope to start this work?
As soon as possible.
That's what I thought. Okay. I don't see a reason not to necessarily approve it, but is anybody here from the public here for this grant of location? Okay. Then I can close the public hearing at least part. If we have any additional questions for, for Matt or Jackie, those were mine.
I'm sorry?
No, I was asking the board to make more questions, otherwise we can just take a vote, deliberate and take a vote. Want to make a motion, go ahead.
Move to approve the grant of location for EverSource to install approximately 58 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way in Main Street to provide electric service to 585 Main Street.
Second.
Okay. Any additional deliberation? I would ask, Matt, and this is for Jackie, you know, maybe not next week. I'm not sure you can even mobilize next week, but we have Shore Road. We're just replacing the, the bridge at the end of that road. That road is closed. It comes right off the rotary. This is just the other side of the train tracks. So any disruption, as people are already sort of rerouting because of Shore Road, having Shore Road open to even detour traffic if need be, like if you actually have to close that northbound lane of Main Street, I think it would be critical to have Shore Road as, as an option for traffic as well as notifying neighbors and everyone in the town center because it's...
When is Shore Road done?
So right now Shore Road's on schedule to be opened next Monday or Tuesday. I think we said it was closed till October 6th, which is a Monday.
You just want to make the motion effective October 6th?
We could, we could do that.
They're pretty good shaped on there. They could, base coat went in today, so.
Follow that.
Shouldn't be an issue for you.
And I'll let Matt know when, when we plan on being out there anyhow. Like a week in advance, I'll, I'll let him know.
Is there even a chance that you'd be doing this in the next week?
There still needs to happen.
I think the customer still has to do stuff on their side first.
We just ask the town engineer to make sure Shore Road's open before they come out.
Yeah. And then just give us all a chance because it was, you know, it was a bit of a, a bit of a notification piece because that's a key artery to the high school as well and morning drop-off. So depending on which, which those two days are, if it's daytime, not evening work. And a good week, we can have a notice in terms of hours of operation so people can reroute their drop-offs. There's also commuters going to the train. So that notification piece will be key, but Shore Road's also key.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional deliberation? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Going right along. Mr. Quill, you can come on up to the table. Thanks for being patient.
Not a problem at all. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good, how are you?
Good. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Greg Quill and I'm here tonight in the role as the town's veterans agent. As some of you may know, the state of Massachusetts passed the HERO Act in August 24. It was signed by Governor Healy. In that act, it provides for an additional tax exemption for disabled veterans. Currently, the town of Winchester provides a $400 exemption for disabled veterans of 10% or more. The new law allows the town to do one of three options. I have them outlined here, but the three options are basically an increase each year indexed on the CPI, a 100% increase, or a combination of the two. Using, actually, let me, let me pass this out so you can take a look at the numbers. But I did just a rough draft proposal here. With some rough numbers on page three so you can understand what I'm talking about. But we'd like to go ahead and propose this probably on the spring warrant, I'm thinking.
We, we have these.
We have it on the fall.
We have it on the fall.
We do have a placeholder for the HERO Act, yes.
As part of our, our state of the town work, we had looked at certain vulnerable populations, veterans and seniors, low-income seniors, and had, actually, I think we've sponsored all three of these on the, on the Fall Town Meeting.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. I know I had spoken to Mark, and Mark and Beth two or three months ago.
So they flagged it to us almost immediately?
Okay.
And we, and we, it came as a part of our process.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't aware it had moved that far.
Yes.
So I guess then tonight I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Well, if you could talk through again the, the totals... Well, if you could talk through again the totals, the incremental, and maybe talk through this chart for us?
Sure. And again, it's very rough. I apologize.
That's okay.
I am not a, I'm not an accountant nor a politician, so. As far as the current FY, right now we have about 34 residents that disaffects. Some of them are disabled veterans, some of them spouses of deceased disabled veterans. In the left, you see the subsection, and that's the subsection that applies to each group. The largest group, obviously, is 22, and that is any veteran 10% disabled or more. It also includes some of the larger percentages of folks who have lost their sight or loss appendages and that type of thing. They get a larger exemption. The, on the bottom section, I put together the same thing essentially and just the numbers. If we went ahead and indexed it with CPI, if we did the 100% increase and then what the combination would be and what the overall impact of the budget would be. The difference between the proposed exemption and the current exemption that we use is that it's not reimbursed by the state at all. The current exemption that we use is reimbursed above 60% of what we're allowing for folks.
So one question I have is, do we have to do the exemptions on an annual basis? So at Fall Town, so we're in '26, we're in the top here. We have a proposal for FY '27. Would it come back to the select board on an annual basis? If we tagged it to the CPI, it would grow each year, but if we said if we went just for 100%, would we have to adjust that in a future year?
I believe so. I believe if you did the 100%, you could stand firm on that.
Yep.
And not have the annual increase and the annual. But overall, I think the, if you did both, the annual increase with CPI is not a huge number. And I expect that, right now we have 34 folks who qualify for this benefit. I would expect that number is actually probably gonna reduce over the next several years. You know, Winchester does not create a lot of veterans, first of all. We don't have a lot of folks who go in the military, and so the likelihood that this number would grow significantly, I think, is pretty low.
Certainly hope to target those who qualify though, too. I know that, you know, we have the Council on Aging, you know, working with Paris as well as state of the town and just thinking about how to socialize this with some other parts of not just senior tax relief, but veteran tax relief and other tax relief. So it's helpful to know.
My personal view is the indexing language, which is now pretty common across these articles and other towns, is really helpful because it just, it is both administratively easier for us, but also people forget to adjust them.
Yes.
And then, you know, suddenly 10 years go by and they haven't been adjusted, so.
And you also look at, you know, the $400, which is the current exemption for veterans. In the town of Winchester, it's realistically not a whole lot of money on, often on very large tax bills.
So the big shift with HERO was the big increase in the numbers, right? One-time increase. And then from here, to index them, to me makes sense.
I mean, you have the option to do that, and that's the ideal. The ideal is we do the big increase and then we do the index.
I think that's the right way to go from a public policy standpoint.
Sure.
So I think for select board's position, we could potentially take that vote tonight, but the goal of having Mr. Quill come in was to both, you know, explain who qualifies and what the options are. We have a placeholder on the warrant. The motion is where we'll decide which of these adjustments to make. So it's first, you know, we want town meeting to have us adopt the HERO Act, and then within the motion, do we want to go to CPI? Do we want to go to 100%? Do we want to do both? We could decide that tonight, but I wanted us all to first just consume the information and we could always put it back. We'll have to take a vote with motions. So if people have a preference, we can certainly express it, but we can have another chance to finalize that as our official position. But it is on the warrant as a select board sponsor.
Just a demographic question because that's something I didn't have before when we did the scrub. You said there's 34 individuals?
Right.
How many, do you have a sense of average age and how many are?
I don't have that information, no.
Or how many are seniors? How many are not seniors?
So the information that I was able to get was through the assessors' office. It was pretty limited, but I was able to get from them, so.
My sense is a lot of them are seniors.
I can tell you, entirely, that I know that a lot of them are seniors, but I can't tell you factual.
Do you have a sense of, is my understanding correct that the number 34 is folks who've already, who are already getting the exemption if they apply for it?
Because it's $500 today.
Yeah. 400. Do you have a sense that?
400.
400. Some of them are larger. One of them is broken down, the 500, 500, that's actually a $1,000 exemption because of the type of disability.
Are those 34 most likely the majority, if not all, veterans? Or are there people who this program should be reaching that aren't aware of it?
So they're the ones that we're aware of that have filed for the exemption. Majority of veterans, I mean, we do do some outreach and let folks know what their available benefits are and things like that. And, you know, I've made contact with folks at the Gables and Jag Center and that type of thing, and I do do some outreach with those folks. So I think right now my answer is yes to that, but I don't know completely.
We should, it's not, it's not all veterans, it's disabled veterans specifically.
Yeah. No, and I just ask because as we look at some of the senior tax exemptions, you know, those programs have, some specific programs have, like seem to really lose people.
There's no, those are massively under-enrolled. I think these are probably, more people are aware of them who are.
Yeah, yeah. Well, especially, especially.
Hard to know for sure.
The folks who have, you know, a disability through their veterans.
The VA, the VA tells them. Pretty much all towns offer this.
Exactly right. And the Executive Office of Veteran Services in the state of Massachusetts has been very aggressive about getting information out to folks and making sure that they have the information they need, so.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Plug for the Veterans Day Parade? I mean, you're at the table.
Plug for the Veterans Day Parade. So, yeah, as always, we will be assembling on November 11th for our parade, and we expect things to go well, and we expect the weather to behave, and have a great day.
It's a lot to ask. I won't be able to attend, I'm out of town, but hopefully, select board can, but it'd be great for the public.
We always love to see folks out there, and it's always a good event.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the information.
Okay, anytime, and feel free to reach out anytime.
Will do. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Good night.
Good.
All right. So we can Mystic School assignment, lease assignment, that is in our packet. If, depending on a vote of town meeting, we would assume control of the Mystic School building and with it, the lease with Kids Corner. And a school committee has taken a vote to transfer that lease to us. We're being asked tonight to accept that lease, subject to town meeting approval to actually transfer the control of the building to us, so.
What did we vote on last time? Did we just talk about it?
We voted to co-sponsor the article at town meeting. This we didn't have in our packet on the 8th. And I don't think we had the expectation that we had to actually take on the lease before we took on the building. That was my question, but I think school committee would like it to kind of be teed up to transfer, you know, after that town meeting approval.
This is specifically the lease, okay.
It's specifically the lease, and we didn't have that. We didn't have the language, and school committee had taken that vote when we asked Matt.
Hopefully, everything happens at the same instant.
Yes.
And has the tenant been made aware of this? Do we know?
Don't think they care.
They might not care, but they should.
Check us to the town of Winchester.
Yeah.
My understanding is they have been made aware, and it expires in 2026. It has some one-year extension, so we're taking on the lease as is, but whether we exercise an extension or tried to renegotiate and chose to renegotiate that, that would be in our, ball will be in our court to do so. But my understanding is they know that this is happening.
I would move that we accept the assignment and assumption of the town of Winchester's lease with the Winchester School After, Winchester After-School Program.
Second, school committee.
Friendly amendment.
Actually, can I just read it?
Oh, do you want to just actually say the real thing?
Yes, because the council has to say contingent on the.
You don't have to use my made-up motions.
Withdrawn.
Move that the select board approve the Mystic School Assignment and Assumption Agreement between the town of Winchester, the school committee, and Winchester After-School Program Inc. in contingent on approval of the transfer of the property to the town by town meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any additional discussion or debate? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I wonder if, it's school committee's article, so maybe Patty, if you can just make a mental note for this and for me, but it might be good for schools and the presentation. I think they'll probably lead with this at town meeting, even though both of our names are on it, to just inform town meeting that these votes have been taken and we can confirm that Kids Corner is aware that this, you know, the assignment vote has been taken by us and the school committee. So it'd be good for town meeting to know that when we're debating.
Are we not gonna present with them?
I don't know.
Yeah. I, I don't care, but if somebody, if we want to.
Whoever presents with them. One of us can, but I think they might lead, it's their building. So we should just make sure we restate that for town meeting's benefit. Okay. The next item is town manager search committee appointments.
Yes.
So we had talked about people and concepts and numbers, but now we actually want to name some folks and build out a committee, so.
And first, thank you to everyone for speaking with the Collins Center last week. It was kind of a quick turnaround on that, but they are working to get a draft position description into our hands for Friday so that we can vote that and they can post it and this committee can convene to do the work involved in reviewing resumes and interviewing, doing preliminary interviews with candidates. That's a first piece. We had discussed some select board members and non-select board members participating in this committee, so that was the idea of a five-person, five-member search committee that would work with the Collins Center to include Michelle and myself, Stacy Ward, our comptroller, and then two former select board members, Lance Grunzabach and Jennifer Wilson.
Town's great.
So we should probably, we should want to name the people, the non-members individually? Does that make sense?
Have the three individuals described, they're all good to do it?
Yes. I spoke with the comptroller late last week.
Yeah.
And I think I've spoken with Lance and with Jennifer. I'd say for myself, I can try, but I think I'm gonna certainly lean on Mike to be in the select board seat. I'm not sure I can make all the meetings, so. But there would still be two of us and I'm probably consistent, too. But the other members are who I think we need to specifically name and then outreach. And normally, that outreach goes from the town manager's office, I think. You have been volun-selected, I think?
I mean.
I feel like that's how I once got on the committee, is someone sent me a letter that I was named. We should just tell them officially, right? So I'm just worried if we should take a vote for the two community members and then we can let Stacy know that we'd like her to be in that role.
So I think Edvai understood it from the Collins Center, and maybe this was just one of those tricky potato-potato things, like do we need to say that we're convening this committee and appoint the members to it? Or, and appoint all of the members to it? Or do we just say?
Appoint them when they're convened?
I think that, it sounded like we sort of would appoint, like convene the committee, so we're saying we're gonna convene a town manager search committee and then make.
Invite those folks. Okay. Whatever words you think we should say, we should say.
Let me check my notes.
We're just gonna have, Stacy's a staffer, we don't need to talk. It's just Jennifer and Lance. We're just talking about appointing them to the committee.
And I did speak with Stacy last week to just confirm her availability and interest.
Okay. Can I, Andy, am I good to just say?
Go for it.
Okay. I move that we appoint Lance Grunzabach to the town manager search committee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I move that we appoint Jennifer Wilson to the town manager search committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And back to the Mystic School, I got a text that in fact, the tenant was notified by Andrew from Schools, so that notification of Kids Corner has been made. Okay. So the next topic was town manager office positions.
Can I go? Sorry, I'm backtracking because I know we took a vote on that, but to go back to our convening of the committee, I think we spoke with the Collins Center last week and talked about what that would look like. And they're gonna be coming back to us on Monday. We're gonna need to then sort of set up a committee and get people scheduled and planned And so just while we're talking about that, just to make sure that there's no other questions or things that people want to know, because we're gonna pretty quickly go from sort of talking about the makeup and what things look like to not being able to talk about a lot at all because there are two members involved and we can't violate open meetings, so just to throw that out there for any consideration at this point.
So I think one thing, that's a really good point because the confidentiality piece that they were stressing very much and the fact that it's a subquorum on select board. So one question I would just ask the town, the select board to consider, Steve has any people up his sleeve, is Collins, they interviewed all of us, they're doing the profile. Then when it's published and posted, if there's some quiet outreach, any of us have for specific individuals, we should channel it through, maybe through the town manager's office, through the select board members. But I think Collins would do that outreach without people being publicly named. So I just want to make sure that we know early on if Bill gets a name and Paris gets a name, and how does that name become known? How do you bubble that up? And maybe it needs to go through the town manager's office. So if Collins could give us that protocol, it can go through Anthe as well, but is there an appropriate kind of point person that doesn't violate confidentiality? Because the outreach could be made to, you know, Sally so-and-so, and Sally says, no, thank you, and Bill doesn't know what happened, and it's not our business to know. So I think that would be helpful because there might be some informal inquiry and then some published, posted, and then applicants and the screening committee does the work. But if there's any targeted outreach, let's understand the right way to make that known because I don't know it, but.
Agreed with everything Michelle said. I think it's also important, the committee with individual applicants is gonna need to keep that from, for example, me, right? Somebody who's not gonna be involved in these interviews because there's no way to have that conversation apart from at this table in a noticed public meeting. Broadly, though, there can be updates on process, right? Because we can just talk about it here, as long as it's something you're comfortable saying.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could talk about where we are in the process or we have 25 applicants and interviews are scheduled on this date and things like that, but.
It's the specific names is really the part you have to keep confidential.
I was gonna lean on Steve to maybe, you've gone, done through this as, you know, HR and acting HR. Any words of wisdom for us in terms of just managing select board expectations as well as public expectations at this earliest?
Collins will do that for you. They will drive the process. You've got an advertising period with, that'll be probably the first step, and the initial screening probably over the next 30 days, I would think. So you probably, and they'll develop a tighter timetable. I think they move pretty well on pulling together the statement and overview of the community. And they said you probably have that this week, I think. Have we got some query on?
They asked a couple, yeah, very straightforward.
Which is really good, and they will begin to pull that together and they will give you an update as to the expected timeline. Interviews, for example, or screening would continue between these dates, first round screening, second round to be, now select some candidates, the actual interviews, development of finalists, at which point if it's finalists, that becomes the public record and for what piece. But until then, but they'll give you an overview. Their point of contact was terrific when we spoke by Zoom, and she said she likes to control the process, so, which is a good thing, so.
I'm gonna assume Bill didn't have any questions. We can always come back, I think.
And we're meeting again next week as well, right?
Select board is meeting on Monday, yeah.
Yeah, so if there are things that we need to update or make changes to or something, we can.
we can.
So the, yeah, the idea was we would get that description by the end of the week so that we could vote it on Monday, so they can post it and move forward, because we, hitting the end of the year timeline is tricky, so hoping to sort of have it all planned out that we're able to do interviews and make a decision in the beginning of December.
So Patty, we'll have a placeholder for that next week, whether, you know, whether it's schedule, advertisement, whatever that deliverable is that we need to officially vote, we'll just have a placeholder for that.
So just.
For next Mondays.
Town manager.
Application, profile, something like that. We'll come up with the right words.
Yep.
But it should be something that we hope to get and vote on. Okay.
Last words?
We didn't have any questions on the town manager search. You left, you came back, we're like.
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing us back, because I was ready to move right on, so. Okay, so the next topic was where we were going to vote Mark Too Good's extension. We've done so. Another item here on the town manager's office, not so much related to what the Collins Center might do for the permanent town manager, but we had discussed at one time a deputy town manager type position. I ran it by Steve briefly and wanted to maybe get his thought on the deputy role, because if we needed, if we wanted to create that, whether we were hiring into that position in the fall, you know, while Mark is still with us and on extension, or if we wanted to just have that place for a future role to grow into, we'd need to get with the Personnel Board to get it on the compensation schedule to get it in front of the town meeting. So there'd be some steps to actually define it.
And that's just to create the position, right?
Correct. So, but, you know, Steve's the town manager and, you know, I thought, wanted to give him a chance to have some thoughts on where has that worked well, what might some position descriptions be? Does it make sense from what you've seen and what you know for us to try to move forward? It could, it's a placeholder, yeah.
Do a.
And?
Welcome to the, thank you. Bye.
Sorry, we're causing chaos.
Just a little bit. So maybe you can talk about deputy town manager.
Are you talking about a second position or a redo of the existing ATM position?
I mean, I think you'd have both, right? And maybe you wouldn't fill both of them, but you wouldn't remove a position. It would just be, you know, so when you look at somebody like Mark Too Good, he wasn't really an assistant town manager. He was a deputy town manager as far as, you know, his, the breadth of his work. And so you want to allow for somebody like that to grow into a position, but maybe also start out with just hiring an assistant. But I wouldn't see that you would hire, me personally, you wouldn't hire both at the same time.
I don't think there's a need for two.
Right.
But the role, to me, it feels like a title issue, which, I mean, you could, you could call it whatever you want, that the, I would think the incoming permanent town manager is kind of, really kind of decide based on the needs of the organization, what kind of skills are we looking for for that new person coming in? Whatever you want to call it, whether it's a deputy or assistant town manager. I don't, I think the assistant town manager title is fine, or the deputy, it doesn't matter. It's the content which is going to really drive the authority and in the expertise of the person that's coming in. For example, there are some town managers who see the role as a, as an entry role for new professionals in the field and will encourage that young professional to be there, say, five or seven years, and then go, go get a community on their own. There are other instances, I, where I served in Danvers, Diane Norris, who served as the assistant town manager for probably 30-plus years and was invaluable in terms of the role that she played and was comfortable in her role. So it varies. There is no cookie cutter in terms of how it works. But I think the key, if I were looking for an assistant, the key piece would be that person needs to be able to stand up in my place and help out and fill the role if, if need be, and can take the reins. So needs to have some line authority and responsibility for the departments so that they understand that that role is hand-in-hand with the management.
Yep.
And I guess that's, I think that the actual specifics of the role will depend on how it comes in. You can see the kind of the role you have now, it's a pretty critical role in terms of keeping projects moving. And my role in interaction with the assistant here has been pretty much daily, if not hourly, to kind of see where things are and what's going on, and it's a collaborative kind of thing. Other communities will have, for example, an assistant town manager or a deputy town manager in the finance side. You might find that model, for example, in Lexington. So that you might see the finance role, someone like on a Stacy role as a deputy. Certainly that's your appointment for that position. But it varies on how the organization filters out. But I think, I think the one position is probably the way to go. If you wanted to have an extra title or a different title, that's your call. But I don't, I wouldn't worry about the job description, because there's a ton of them. But you can do, it'll be tailored to the qualities of the person you bring in. You may find a crackerjack that comes in with one set of skills in an area that may be, say, on labor relations. So now you've got someone that can really focus on, say, the collective bargaining aspect or the preventive labor relations as opposed to something else. It really depends on the role of the individual and their strengths and what they bring to the role in that job. You could hire specifically for an area, say, we want someone who can do X or Y, and that's your focus in recruitment. But my gut says that a new person, come a new town manager, would probably be open to kind of looking at all the candidates and what they bring to it. But the key is that that assistant or deputy, whatever you want to call it, needs to have some line authority from the town manager for department management.
Yep.
I think that's critical long-term so that they have the authority to also manage and hold folks accountable in a, in a team way to make the whole thing work.
So if, if, I'm just trying, so I, I think what you're hearing is, you know, you can call it what we want, it's going to be based on the needs of the person and the, and the permanent town manager and sort of what gaps they see for themselves. If it, if we thought about it as a place, if we all agreed that right now we don't think there's room in the organization for those three roles, the manager, the deputy, and the assistant, there's going to be two people. One's going to have the title of manager, the second person's going to have a title of deputy or assistant, depending. If we thought about the deputy as a place to grow into, so the younger person, five or 10 years in, is the assistant, and it creates a place to grow into with title responsibility, maybe with compensation, does it make sense to create a career path, a bit of a ladder within the town manager's office? Or is any downside to creating that ladder?
No, there's no downside. It's, it's a matter of what can you afford? How does it work in the organization and the field? It's a judgment call in terms of how the organization looks and feels and how you want it to look 10 years down the road.
Michelle, you're not describing ever having all three at the same time.
Correct. I'm actually suggesting we wouldn't have all three.
You're saying an assistant graduates to a deputy.
It's creating a space and a spot in the compensation schedule that maybe exists between the manager and the assistant town manager. We're not talking dollars and cents right now, but someone who might be here 10 or 15 years who doesn't aspire to be the town manager, but can take on more duty and maybe thinks they want a different.
But when someone became the deputy, then the assistant would remain open.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think that would be the vision. And this is just, it was really a spitball discussion. We'd said it once, I wanted to get Steve's perspective, because he's, he's seen it in place, he's, he's hired it, and we'd have to get Personnel Board, it, to create the placeholder. So, you know, grab a job description and get the wheels in motion, even if no one's filling it tomorrow or before December. If the next hire is the assistant town manager and our permanent town manager makes that hire in due time.
So it's to get it on the comp schedule for the flexibility of.
That was the thinking?
I think it would be helpful to, maybe to just continue this next week, and it would be helpful to have the compensation schedules.
Some, yeah, some.
Actually take a look at that.
Some job description type things?
Well, no, to actually see, like.
Where it might fit.
What is, what are the salary bands there?
That's fair.
And.
I just wanted to sort of get ideas on the concept before we get in with, like, job descriptions, but I think that, that's a good point. We can look at both job descriptions and kind of bands. I'll try to get with HR and Personnel.
And to your point, Michelle, what we heard from the.
Get myself to do, there we go.
What we heard from the fire department was they had a difficult time keeping some of their younger firefighters, because they didn't see that path to move up, because there was only, you know, captain, lieutenant, and then fire chief. So we created that deputy fire chief position. We were one of the only communities that hadn't done it, and I think it, it helped to kind of move the needle and keep people. And so this is, you know, similar in that way. It's an opportunity for people to, to see that there's growth if they stay within the community, because it tends to be the assistant town manager positions are less experienced and they're, you know, more, more just, you know, new to the roles.
I'm not sure that's the case, but maybe you.
Yep.
But it can vary.
Yep.
As I said, I've seen a number of long-term serving assistants who are in a, in a strong role for years.
Yep.
So it varies.
Okay. All right, so to be continued, but I'll get some details. Thanks, Steve. That's certainly helpful. Thank you. Next up, just trying to get state of the town earlier in our meetings than later, select board committee updates. I know Parrish, you have some state of the town updates.
I do.
Does anybody else have any other, their audit hasn't met lately?
Cable advisor.
I feel like I probably have a.
I got six years ago, man. Nothing from cable for.
Uh, sorry, just to back up. I believe we still have spots on the Personnel Board that need filling, so just to make a little.
Your Board, like 80% vacant, I need, yeah.
Yes. Make a plug, Personnel Board and all the other ones.
Three positions, so.
Well, given your rapid reconstruction of the committee on names, you know.
Yeah.
Anything from Fields, Capital, actually, Bill, do we want to get Capital back next week, or do you think we'll have motions? Any, any reason to have them come back or written motions soon?
I don't know what's changed since they were last here.
Probably nothing.
Well, the only thing that's changed is their, the memo they sent us on the paving.
Yeah.
But we don't have that motion yet, so we can't, but they could come in.
With the article, yeah.
Okay. Maybe see if Roger wants to write us a memo or share the language or come in next week, but we'll make some place for that. But you're right, I don't think they've added any new projects, but they have.
No projects.
No, I, and I can't, I don't know the details of this. I, I know they are trying to figure out what this GIS project is that has to do with the schools and the planning board.
Why does Capital, I mean, it shouldn't be that hard for them to figure it out, given who's the vice chair of the Capital Planning Committee, but what's, what's the reason CPC needs to be involved in that?
They don't know if they do or don't. They just have been told about it, but they didn't understand what it was, and that was the end of it.
Okay, so all the more reason, next week, if there's an update, because I don't think we've seen that article either.
Yeah, they hadn't seen it either.
Okay, so maybe if, an update, maybe Roger, have Roger call me, that'd be easier.
I, I don't think CPC needs to be involved in that. I'm just, having spoken to the school committee about it, or a couple of the members of the school committee, I think it's, it's small for, it's like 60 grand or something.
Less than that.
Yeah, and, and it's a planning school committee thing around.
Okay.
And we're, we're going to see the full warrant for next week anyway, right?
Yeah, next week we'll have it. That's right. Any other updates on Mike Affordable Housing Trust or?
Just getting ready for, you know, town meeting. I know the trust had received support from the WCCP for the 164th Street project, and so that will be proposed town meeting, so that's great. Would be something to move forward that project, but also hopefully move off the select board table as well and actually get some money to renovate the, the property and get, get somebody housed there.
Okay. Yes, we'll see those motions as well next week from the WCCP. Okay.
They did, speaking of Capital, CCP, as I was, they put 50,000, I think, towards Lincoln.
Lincoln Chiller?
I would imagine it would be the Chiller, not.
Yeah, not the Flatwork. Okay.
The, yes, so it was the Chiller.
Oh, good. I'll look forward to seeing all of it. Okay. So maybe turn over state of the town, Parrish.
Yeah, so a couple, so one is administrative, but it's an important one, and then one is Worksroom Six. I think we can close out tonight, hopefully. So what you have at your table, it's this horizontal page that's in.
It's an I chart, is one of those.
It's in very small font, I apologize for, it said 12 points, it appears to be like four points. So what I wanted to articulate here, we have a lot that's been in flight for four months, huge amount of planning work has been done, a huge amount of analytics has been done, and we've actually started to boil down to really good recommendations at the State of the Town Table, some of which has started to come here, including Worksroom Six tonight that will hopefully close out. So what I wanted to show the group is a calendar that gets us, you know, really through the end of our planning, and then beyond that, it's a little bit more conceptual, so let me just take everyone through it. So Worksroom One, which is schools and muni operating needs, we, we've done the historicals with the schools, we're having a conversation with them around level services as we speak. I'll have an executive session topic on that this evening. And then they have additions, which is under October 10th, but really we can get the level services done that day. Additions, they've already told us. And then, and then on the municipal side, we've already gotten fire, police, and DPW, sorry, we've gotten fire and police done, DPW is half done. If we can close that out with general government, and Steve would be good to connect with you on this offline this week, we can hopefully wrap those in the next few weeks. Worksroom Two is Capital, which, you know, and Bill, if you want to add anything, or Michelle, you know, we had a long discussion about this, at this point about a month ago at the State of the Town Table for the full, you know, hour plus. They had eight different ways just to, to look at it, and, and we could, we have the options. We should talk about it at this table, so everyone's aware of it, but that's, analysis is largely done. The only final step there would be the inclusion of that in the override, which is a later conversation. Worksroom Three, which there's a few pieces of, one is Transfer Station. We had a long discussion about it for two weeks in a row, for about half the meeting. I think we've told the, you know, people leading that effort to come to us at a soon, at a select board meeting soon, you know, we talked about whether it's the 6th or, I guess the next one's the 20th?
Yes.
So the dates on here are wrong, the 15th and 27th should be 6th and 20th. So that one will probably be the 20th, and to bring us concepts around pay-as-you-drow and commercial pricing and volume that they've talked about at the State of the Town Table.
Pause there for one quick second, and Patty, can you just, for our next meeting, can you just follow up with the town clerk on when we need to have transfer station permit fees set? And we'll make sure we get it calendared, so I know we want to discuss it probably in October, but if there's a date, you know, a hard and fast date by which we have to set the transfer station permit schedules for commercial, for residential, I want to make sure we're not getting ourselves too caught up against the deadline. I assume it's in October, if, you know, sometime in November, because there's printing and things that need to happen, so.
Solar, which we'll talk about when we get to fall time meeting articles. Michelle and I had a conversation with them today, and Steve has been very involved in this as well. We have an update on that, and then the, the other ones are more sort of fees, which, Michelle, you sent me an email, I think we've, we've done a lot of work on that, or at least good amount. Preliminary discussion hopefully at the State of the Town Table soon.
Yep.
And then sort of a, a final discussion and then, and then discuss modifications later in October.
Yes.
Residential exemption, that analysis has been done for, at this point, months. That, that was, you know, a piece I had worked on with, with Mariano and Pat Matson from FinCom. That deck is ready to be discussed really at any time. I think we could talk about that at the next select board meeting, just so people understand the concept, you know, to refer everybody as to what that is and kind of get everyone caught up there. I think the, the thing with the residential exemption is that's really implemented along with picking an override figure, and we also probably want the assessor to come in and be part of that, because there's some administrative pieces that we want to talk about. So that's kind of landing, and then Worksroom Six, we can hopefully close that tonight, pending the next part of this conversation. So that's really landing a lot of the planning work. And I think when I've sort of tried to plan it out then against February, you could see the bottom half of this page. So November, we would have, late November, sort of Thanksgiving timeframe, we would have a draft plan that incorporates kind of all of the different pieces of this, from municipal and school needs to capital, to all the ways we're going to try to generate income that are not the property tax revenue, levy, come on, levy and revenue, residential exemption, as well as the senior and veterans programs for tax fairness, and then the fiscal stewardship pieces around operating reserve policy, OPEB trust, and debt management, which is Worksroom Six. So we'd sort of put that together in a plan format by the end of November, and then by December, we would finalize that plan, and State of the Town itself would adjourn. That, that's the idea here, meaning the twenty-five member group that we love our Friday mornings to be spent with. And, and I think the group would, would hopefully all be happy with the work that would conclude then. At that point, and this is where it gets much more conceptual, there's just a ton that has to go on with socializing the plan in the community, public forums. I think at that point, we vote not on a single override figure, but, but multiple override figures. I think last time they had three. We can decide whether we want three or a different number. Probably early February, we would vote on an initial number, initial single number after getting feedback from, from the town and having public forums. In early February, we would pick a, a single number, call a special town meeting. We probably have to call it sooner, but it would actually occur in early February. And then mid-February, I think, is the deadline by which we have to pick a single number definitively, and, and then that's sort of, that's sort of it by late February. And then, and then it's, we're done, and then elections in March.
Right. So similar to transfer station permits, getting a question on the ballot, there's a time cert, and Mariano can tell us what that date is in late February for a March election.
Right. And also like calling the special town meeting.
Yes.
Assuming we want to. They did last time, they didn't have to because they didn't take any record votes, but I think everyone thought it was a good idea.
And then the other thing on scheduling, if we want to have the assessor in to talk about residential exemptions, do we want that like later November? We can take it up on our next select board meeting, but if you like, that's an early November, late November conversation? I'm just curious how much lead time we think.
Let me talk, talk to him. He had, he definitely had a concern about the amount of time it would take just to implement.
Yep.
Meaning if, if it, if you vote on it in December, for example, he might need, it's not like two months, it's, he needs longer to implement.
Like it could be July one.
Correct.
It could be the quarterly tax bills for the next fiscal year after a March vote, after a Springtown meeting. So I just want to understand that, so that we're both giving him the time and then.
Why don't we exchange an email with him on that? And then we could talk about, because if, if he has like, this is going to be a long time to implement, we should talk to him sooner, versus if he says, yeah, I can do it by July first, so.
Yeah. So I think July might be the most realistic timeframe, but I just want to make sure we understand that, and we can set expectations correctly for residents.
July is the correct timeframe, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Excuse me, just as a reference, it's in mid-November that you.
Transfer station and fees.
But they take effect January.
Yes, they take effect January, so mid-November. Okay. So we'll make sure we get that calendar by the end of October.
And again, if, if some of that is, is sort of rates, that can occur. I think we talked about this at the table on Friday, like that can occur. I appreciate at the end, Mike, you were there, I don't know if Bill, you were there for that piece of it. This year, broader concepts like pay-as-you-throw that requires us to bag all trash, it's very unlikely that's happening on January first, but we can at least.
Yeah. Or expanding commercial haulers, like just opening the pilots running through the end of October, but expanding that to, you know, three trucks to six trucks. Like that's going to probably take a little more time, but we want to have that conversation and maybe even get on a schedule of what that might look like. So immediate changes to what we charge for a permit, but then longer term, when might other things come on board?
So potentially having them asking DPW and Nick to come in by the end of October?
Yes.
Yeah, or at least, at least the director of DPW. I, I think we're going to have the working, we'll have Preset A fees and Rachel probably as well.
I would certainly like something, and I can run this by Steve as well, but maybe something by, for our meeting on the twentieth, a memo from Nick on, on the pilot, you know, tonnage, fees, like it's running through the end of October, but by then we should know mostly what we've done, so what were the metrics? Whether he comes in or just has the detail, I think that'd be great.
I just, this schedule's really helpful.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I think it helps lay everything out really clearly and what we need, and helps to get us to a March vote for the override, so I appreciate that we've got this kind of well sought out ahead of time.
The, the two substantive things, and again, this is the right-hand column, which is OPEB trust and debt. We've talked about operating reserve policy. So what I have up on the screen is Select Board Policy Three. So these are internal to us, don't require a town meeting, obviously, we control them. The first one you can see here is the Financial Summit, that's currently in Select Board Policy Three. We have the whole point on structural balance and operating reserve. This is what we talked about last time, it is verbatim from what we talked about. We, you know, the language on the structural balance isn't our existing operating reserve policy. The operating reserve policy has been moved to ten to fourteen, but stepping it up from eight to fourteen to ten to fourteen over time. So any comments there, but, but we've, we've discussed that. The only new section here, and again, this was discussed at the Town Language, is virtually identical with just built out a little bit, which is the, the whole concept, and Michelle and I were talking about this beforehand, we talked about the State of the Town, of level principal versus level debt service. There's, you know, pros and cons of both. Level principal creates long-term savings, but also eats up a little more taxpayer capacity sooner. Level debt mitigates the near-term impact, but also costs a little more in the long-term. So a soft presumption for exclusions to be level principal, a soft presumption for other types of debt, which are basically debt against stabilization funds, the operating budget or enterprise funds, to be level debt. The reason there is when you're bonding out against a budget we have, like a fund that we have, you're generally doing it because we don't have the cash, so eating up too much of the cash doesn't, sort of defeats the purpose. But in all cases, asking town manager and the treasurer with, you know, Hilltop, but whoever that external advisor would be, to consider both, and if it's a larger issuance, meaning in excess of five million dollars, also to have that discussion with the select board before making a final decision. The real opportunity, as I said at the State of the Town Table, to do this one differently would be, would be Morocco, or, or, you know, some kind of an exclusion of that magnitude.
Yeah. A large capital project, which could be something before Morocco.
Yeah, but particularly excluded capital projects, so flood mitigation.
Yes.
My envelope, back of the envelope math on our current cost of capital as a town, and I presented this at the State of the Town, which is I used a four and a half percent discount rate, we would have saved about a million dollars on Lynch over its entire life. It's not, not a seventy-four million dollar exclusion, not transformational by itself, but, you know, a million dollars out of seventy-four is a million dollars.
I mean, if you transfer it to borrowing for capital, it's this whole building, right?
It's a million dollars one time.
If it's a million dollars saved.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We need a million dollars recurring for this building, yeah.
I hate this building, it's building for ants.
It's more money for us. Okay. All right. So I don't, we want to vote on this, but this is Select Board Policy Three. I think it's pretty much done.
If people are prepared to vote and make it and just adopt it as the policy, if people are not ready, let's just get it in the agenda for, for next Monday and vote it just as a, you know, pretty standard order of item business. Does anybody feel that they need to read it again? As Parrish said, it's, you know, have a summit, move the baseline of reserves from six to ten, up to, you know, eight to fourteen, ten to fourteen over time, and level, level debt versus level principal.
And structural balance.
And structural balance, so.
I'm okay with it. I mean, this is, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, so I think it's, it's good to put it in place.
Couple years, couple months.
Yes, and, you know, it's, you know, also just as a reminder, I mean, it's, you know, future boards aren't, you know, bound to this necessarily, but it's a, you know, us voting of it is some pretty strong guidance, which is necessary, especially if we're having the override discussion. So fully in support, and fully supportive voting now.
So I'll move that we adopt revise Select Board Policy Three as presented in the meeting.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Just want to say nice work on this, Parrish.
And ask a question.
Yes, Patty.
Policy Five, is you already have a policy three, is this an amended policy?
It's a, it's a revision.
What is the, it's a re.
To replace.
Is that what you said?
Except that we adopt.
Revise?
Revise Select Board Policy Three.
So the current policy three, this part, Financial Summit, it ends here, after fiscal year. So there's everything beyond that, this is the new stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what, that's one word I was looking for.
Okay. So with that, we have a second. Any additional debate? Thank you again, Parrish, for all this.
I have one more, too.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll put September twenty-ninth on the date of that policy.
Okay. And this one's, I think, even quicker. This is a very, you know, a topic that frankly, we care about, and it's our job to care about, and FinCom cares about, but is not one that gets a lot of attention really beyond that. So Stacy comes here all the time, as all of you know, and talks to us about our pension liability, talks to us about our OPEB liability. The first two parts here are writing down statements that exist in other places into a new Select Board Policy Seven, that it shall be the policy to develop and implement, to determine, it should say develop, a scribbler's error, and implement a strategy for the full funding of our pension liability. We'll work with town manager, advised by comptroller on that, and work with FinCom on that. OPEB language is exactly the same. There's no dates on these, it's just saying, this is our objective, that we're trying to fund these liabilities. And I think this, you can imagine, guides things like the fact that we are going to try to pay off the liability in FY twenty-seven, which this body, you know, told Stacy we were in favor of, or for OPEB that we're going to transfer the PARAC sort of windfall, quote-unquote, into OPEB. You know, maybe not all of it, but we are going to develop a strategy to fund. So that should just be reflecting our current policy. And then the bottom here, which is also quite short, is this whole point about our pension trust fund is a hundred and fifty million dollars roughly, is managed by the state, which our retirement board has outsourced. Our OPEB trust fund, which is about eight to nine million dollars, is managed in-house. The state will also manage that if we want to, or we could hire a third-party manager in the revocable trust that was signed by town manager Richard Howard. All of that authority is given to the treasurer with the consent of town meeting if she, in both cases, it's been a she, chooses to hire a third-party manager. I've talked to Ann, I've talked to Stacy, spoke about this with, with Beth, and I've talked to the commissioners of the trust funds about this, who currently manage the eight to nine million dollar fund. They are fully supportive of this. They understand as this thing starts to grow to be fifty, a hundred billion dollars, we have to have a third-party sort of manager who's a full-time staff looking at it. So the idea here is we ask the commissioners to sort of be the body that helps research, select a manager, advise the treasurer on that, and also do the quarterly reporting with them. If the treasurer ever needs to make a change, the commissioners would advise him or her in, in doing so. And so I think the commissioners like this approach, they're sort of per-manager-selection unit. And then I think separately, we're also talking about if we do a big top-up of general stabilization, asking the commissioners to take on some of that, so this frees up a little bit of their plate.
So does this, the change of responsibility from the treasurer to the commissioners, does it need town any approval?
It's not a, the treasurer retains all responsibility for it, because that's, there's no way to amend the trust. It's just including them, because, because what the treasurer has said is, it's a lot of pressure on me to be the one person picking a manager, picking, oh, let's go with Mass Prim, or let's go with Fidelity, or State Street. And, and so the one area in our town government, we have three professional investors working sort of for us as volunteers, is the commissioners of the trust funds. And so I think she felt much more comfortable, and I think this is a good practice, that they would research and, and look at three or four options, they would recommend one to her, she's going to have to be the person who makes the decision, and then town man, town meeting has to approve any selection she makes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that is actually written into the trust.
So what we're being asked to do tonight is endorse this idea, bless this idea, and then if Ann goes outside and hires, it would come to Springtown Meeting.
Correct. Correct. And we would, this would sort of give the treasurer and the commissioners, who are all appointed by us, the direction to sort of go do this.
Yep. Okay.
But as, I mean, again, there's eight and a half, nine million dollars in there, there's going to be a hundred million dollars in there eventually, plus. And so, you know, while the commissioners have done a great job, I think we have to, you know, like the retirement board, we have.
Somewhat professionalize our investment and our management, yeah.
Right. Because they're not doing this as, I mean, they're all professional investors in their day jobs, but they're not doing this in their day jobs. They're doing this as volunteers.
So what would this motion be? Move to adopt a different policy or direct?
This is just, yeah, to create a, you know, Policy Seven, which is focused on helping us address our long-term liabilities.
Okay.
Can I just check with you? You said determine is a scribbler's error, and should we develop? Or is your, are you, or should.
I think we should say develop.
Develop, okay. So move that we adopt Select Board Policy Seven as presented with the scribbler's error that is being fixed right now, resolved.
Second.
Real-time editing.
You can remove that part from the motion.
Any additional discussion? Debate? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for this, Parrish. All right.
All right. And best of all, I promise that is the last of Worksroom Six anyone will ever have to listen to.
I doubt that. Just saying. I go to those meetings on Fridays. I don't think that's true. Okay. So Forest Ridge is on the agenda. When we met on the eighth, we did not vote as a board to put Forest Ridge on the warrant, but Parrish and others had mentioned some questions around who was in favor and folks who had signed a petition. So I asked Mike to follow up with at least one or two of the petitioners, and I think ConCom is here tonight. And I'm going to turn over to Mike to see if there's some additional sort of movement or update on ConCom and interest in that particular property. So if you want to tee it up.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle. So I attended the Conservation Commission meeting last week and presented the Forest Ridge concept, you know, a little bit more expansively, so the majority of the members were, were very familiar with the project already and, and familiar with the site, and we were able to, with Elaine Reeland, kind of go over the maps and discuss it. And I think, I think the chair is here and another member. If, if we want to talk about, I know they unanimously supported the warrant article, but I think Ms. Olson can discuss that at more length. Sorry to put you on the spot, Tracy.
Good morning.
Tracy Olson, I'm chair of the Conservation Commission.
Welcome.
The Conservation Commission is wildly enthusiastic about this piece of property. It's one of the largest still remaining forested open spaces within Winchester. It has been under some development pressure in the past, and so we'd like to see it become a conservation restricted area owned by the town. So the commission would be very happy to oversee the property once it's purchased, as we do with other conservation areas in town. We would envision developing a forest stewardship plan, similar to the one that we're currently developing for the town forest. These plans increase the habitat value and the recreation potential of the property. We could foresee some improvements eventually to help increase the recreational value of the property and capitalize on the connection to the fells, to, to allow residents to utilize that.
Were there any other, obviously I didn't attend the meeting last week, but any other highlights of the conversation from ConCom? Any other?
I, I think, as Tracy mentioned, more of the interest in the commission of staying with the project in the future and, and having their hand in, and seeing it through, maintaining with the project in the future and having their hand in, and seeing it through, maintaining it, develop a plan for it. So while we had heard support from people before, we didn't really, we hadn't heard more formally that interest in the ongoing engagement.
Can you, thanks, Mike. Can you say more? Because I've raised two key questions. One is, is it developable? And two, who's the body that's gonna stick with it? The second question, I really would love to hear more about that, which is, your view is the commission would do what? I guess, yeah, maybe say more.
The commission now oversees all of the conservation areas within the town. And so those include making sure that the, there's maintenance of those properties. We use volunteers, we use scout troops, and we use the DPW to do that. So there's a commissioner assigned to each of the different areas. We also are now, we deal with the butter issues, and we are now developing forest stewardship plans for the forested, for the larger forested properties in the town. And so that includes putting together a plan that helps maintain the value, the habitat value of the property, and also, especially as far as birds, and also resilience of the forest to future climate change. And the funds for that are available from the state. We've applied for and received a matching grant to get the forest stewardship plan done for the town forest. We're actually holding a meeting on October 30th to get feedback from the public on landowner goals for that plan. And that will, once the plan is in place, it's a 10-year non-binding plan. We would then be able to use that plan to apply for state grants to carry out the parts of the plan that the town agrees that we would like to do.
So this is, just to be clear, this is not, in your view, recreation space, more it's a, it's a forest that's conservation land and you had stored it in that way?
Yes. And so, and some of the value of that property is its recreation potential. People use the town forest for lots of, for mostly passive recreation, dog walking, hiking, bird watching, things like that. So that's one of the goals, one of the types of goals that goes into a forest stewardship plan. And that's one of the things that we would emphasize, because our conservation areas, we are important properties that people enjoy recreating.
And so to take the town forest, do you have, do you have a subset of the commissioners who are, for example, you know, there's a commissioner here in the audience, I won't name him, but there's a pond I know he spends a lot of time working on, and I've joined him for some of that work. Is there a subset of the commissioners who would kind of make this their project? That have said, this is the project we're gonna wake up every day and think about?
Which, the town forest?
Yes, I asked the question, I asked the question convincingly. Who have done it sort of for the town forest to date? And whether it's them or other people who do it for Forest Ridge?
So I am the assigned commissioner for the town forest. And so we would have an assigned commissioner for the Forest Ridge.
I had the same question, Paris, so thank you for asking it.
And that person is responsible for leading any efforts as far as maintenance, as far as abutters, as far as we're, as a group, we're also, we're all trying to move the forest stewardship program plan through. We have a volunteer who's helping with that who has experience in forest, forestry. She's not a forester, but she's experienced in-
What's the history of the town forest? Not the entire history of it, just the, like, how did it come to the town? Is, people called Brooks Parkers, right? So did, was it acquired? Was it willed?
It was donated.
I can help with that.
Yeah, I mean, you're, it's your neighbor. I think that's the right comp for it, by the way, from what it sounds like.
Yeah, it was-
Michelle donated it.
I wish my name was Parkhurst, and I had that kind of land. It was donated in the 1930s as parkland and got a restriction through the state. So it was maintained as the town forest from that point forward. It abuts the Brooks Estate in Medford. And a Town Meeting vote in 2017, 2018, does that sound about right, anybody? That Town Meeting, Conservation Commission put a warrant article on. It was the DPW purview. It was just town-owned land. And Conservation Commission put a Town Meeting article on to take control of the town forest, and it passed. So now they have become the commissioners. I live across the street. It's definitely, all the things that Tracy said, birds, paths, walking, dog walking. There's been several Eagle Scout projects on boardwalks, bridges, streams. And I don't see Tracy when I walk there, but we probably go at different times, but it's pretty actively, it's actively used. It's also actively maintained. There've been new signage done with various groups. There are some actual marked trails that you can do. So that's the history. It had been maintained, at least in terms of like removing fallen trees. It's not exactly, you know, it's not perfectly cleaned up in terms of undergrowth, but when the Conservation Commission took it over, I think there's more interest in getting outside groups and youth groups to replace some, some bridges and slats and actually do a better job of clearing. So it is a good comp, I agree. I don't know what you wanna add.
No?
It's pretty good.
Yeah, 20 years living there, she knows something.
And do you, so that's super helpful. And in terms of maintenance, that's done by the Concom, not by the DPW? Or you coordinate their crews to-
So-
It's a little bit of both.
Yeah. We mobilize volunteers for some of the work that needs to be done. Some of the heavy work, especially when it involves power tools, needs to be done by DPW. And the scouts do a lot of the maintenance.
And they do some improvements as well, right?
Yes.
And so some of the boardwalks that they've put in various places provide additional access to parts of the forest and land that otherwise were inaccessible. And I always use the example, I used the other night, of the Science Park, even though it's a very small area relative to Forest Ridge or the forest, the town forest. The scouts put boardwalk all through there, and it was completely forsaken. It was all marsh. You couldn't walk there. And now it's full of people. I walk my dog there every day. It's like fantastic. And they did an amazing job. And it was managed, or at least overseen by the Conservation Commission in collaboration with the scouts who did all the work. So it was a great, great outcome.
I'll say this, given that, you know, some of us got our picture in the paper, Wedge Pond pulling invasives and trash.
That was bull.
And Bill, I would say that it's almost like fairies come into the town forest to make improvements. I've never seen the scouts doing the work. It just, things appear. So I'm grateful. Like a sign might go up, a new boardwalk, I've just never seen-
But you see the benefit of it.
I see the benefit. I just don't see the effort. But maybe a little more PR would be useful for you all.
Hmm.
Because it does happen.
Yes, it does.
Send a, send a person with a camera. Any other questions for Tracy? One question I would have is, are any of the commissioners, you know, kind of neighbors to this property? It's kind of, I was gonna go where Paris was in terms of who would be on point, but are any of the commissioners, is this their neighborhood? Is this their kind of interest?
It's my neighborhood. I live on Forestry.
So around the corner, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Does Concom ever, I mean, I appreciate for the town forest, the Brooks Parker, Brooks Parkers might be the biggest asset you have, is that right?
Yes.
In terms of acreage?
24 acres.
It's big, yeah.
Yeah, 29. And then Winning Farm is probably the second-largest.
The trails around the residential development?
Yes.
Yeah. And actually, maybe Wedge Pond's the example of this, where Concom actually works with a nonprofit that has been organized around a particular conservation asset?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the only example of that?
Winter Pond.
And Winter Pond, yes.
Yes, those are the only two.
So how does that relationship kind of work? So there's obviously a group of people who wanted to do that. But did Concom help get those started? Did they just organically create it?
I would defer to-
Come on up to the table, Mr. Band, if you'd like. You were always welcome to join from the outset.
You got my question, though, right? Because if there's gonna be a group of people who wanna help with this, that's not, the Conservation Commissioners have a million things to do. And it can't just be one, right? Because you need one more, right? So would there be a way to collaborate with a nonprofit with the Conservation Commission?
Yeah. So to speak, the two models are really the friends of Winter Pond and the friends of Wedge Pond, as far as these kind of volunteer groups that have become formalized. And so the history on Winter Pond, you know, Ann Storer, who is a Conservation Commissioner, she worked for 20 years with her neighbors to kind of get stewardship of Winter Pond and then formalize it by forming a, whatever it is, a foreign, you see, nonprofit organization, which they use as a vehicle to raise private money for maintaining Winter Pond and some of the improvements that were going on there. In the case of Wedge Pond, the start of that was when Conservation Commission was doing their annual average owner cleanup days over the years. We attacked Elliott Park two years ago and then found out that the group of immediate abutters were very interested in trying to further the restoration of Wedge Pond. So we, we worked with them. We helped create that organization, basically giving them a model from Wedge Pond, the Winter Pond model, and asked them and recruited them into the, into the organization. And so that was formalized, as you know, for a couple of years ago. And that's been the nucleus for, you know, volunteers spun up in an organized way. So in the case of Forest Ridge, you could imagine reaching out to the public, people who care about conservation, and creating this organization based on that model. It doesn't exist now, but it certainly would be, with a will, to do it. It can definitely be created. There's a lot of interest in preservation and open land, obviously, in our town. So that's the model, I think, that we would pursue.
Yeah, I think that there are, there are two objectives. One is to raise money for work within the space, and the other is to mobilize volunteers. I think that we have an avenue to access funds, two avenues. One is the forest stewardship programs that we'd like to put in place for that parcel, which gets the benefit of the forester and allows us to apply for state funds.
And forget, for example, if this bond bill goes through, the governor's bond bill, which would be transformational for the fells and all, would, would Concom lead the writing of the application for that, for a grant for that, for example? Because that could apply to an adjacent piece of land like this, right? I mean, you could get a six-figure grant. Would, was that something Concom would-
That's something we could do. Yep.
Okay.
And Liz is actively working on that, you know, at this time. So and I know that there's, one of the initial meetings, the application is on Wednesday. And so I think that-
Liz, our town council? Or the, someone from Concom?
Someone from Concom, yes. That was brought in on the kind of forest side, right? I think. So I think, so she kind of has a line on the state grants. And I think that the threshold for that is coming up with the forest stewardship plan. And once you do that, then you are able to really go after pretty sizable dollars. So that is starting as we speak. But it's a long lead time as well. It's not overnight. It's state money.
You're talking about some strategies for, once the land is owned, for supporting. Are there strategies for purchasing conservation land as well that you're aware?
That's the bond bill, which is not passed legislature. The DCR has a acquisition fund as well, but I don't, it's small, and I don't know how. I'm actually unaware of if we've applied, but that's, it's not, the bond bill dramatically expand that pool of money for the, for hols.
I want to be mindful of, I know that you sat and waited for us to call you up to this topic, but we do a few other topics. The goal was to answer some questions that the Select Board, I think, had. And I don't want to cut off questions, but I also want to be mindful of time as well. Tracy, you're available. And Bill, I suppose if we have some written questions we want to come back with, or, you know, progress on the forest steward plan and program that you're applying for. But I just want to, maybe if people have any last questions, I wanted to give them a-
I have, go ahead.
I'll let you, I'll let you make your comment, for sure.
No, I wanted to make a suggestion, or make people aware about this particular property in that one of the challenges the town has had in the past of acquiring the last few large opportunities for open land and forests and so forth, has been to acquire land and actually still have public access to that land. Winning Farm, we have 20 acres, but there's no way to get into that land to use, because the agreement somehow with the developer for Winning Farm, that provision or that protection was not put in place. So in this case, Forest Ridge has great potential, but it's important for the town to get kind of control of that from a point of view of making sure that we have access to that property going forward, and any development doesn't cut off access.
Where would the access be for this site?
Forest Circle.
Forest Circle, yeah.
Oh, the opening on Forest Circle.
Very, you know, narrow access point to this and the way in which this land needs to be acquired. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that it's gotta include a provision that, that access is preserved, and that people can get in there and take advantage of it. And-
How big is the, and Mike, this may be a real question for you, the opening on Forest Circle? Well, it takes off offline, but just with the housing going in there and stuff.
So in the scope of the acquisition, I guess this question for Mike, I guess you're assuming that whatever goes forward as far as acquiring the land from the owners, that access would be preserved to the town? That would-
Yes, absolutely. Yep. And through Forest Circle would be the primary access point. So, and certainly, you know, other homeowners and abutters to the property, you know, would have access themselves. And there's other entry points. I think that, that is the one that is most accessible for people. And I think, you know, obviously it'll evolve over a period of time, but that's, that's the point, you know.
The parking, that was the problem with these other areas. I don't want to get into the details, but that's an important consideration as far as how much you pay for it and for what purpose.
What do you mean by parking? You mean like a trailhead parking, like on fact?
Yeah, going back to Winning Farm, there's, and the town forest has the same problem. And Winning Farm was acquired, and the developer, I don't know all the details, but then there is like a little path that was left that you can walk to, but there's no way, there's no place to park there. And you can't park on private property or on the street. So effectively, there's, the access-
I think that the difference here is-
Park on my street all the time.
Right, yeah. Just park on Michelle's driveway.
Yeah, I think the difference here is that the goal is to connect to the fells. And so, you know, that, that area will wrap around, and it'll essentially extend the fells as well. So if you can get in from another location, you can also enter and exit there. So-
So is the idea, Mike, just because, the idea is that it would interconnect with North Border Trail? So you would, you would park then somewhere else and walk into it, or you'd actually have a direct trailhead access into this parcel? Basically, I'm asking, are we building a trailhead?
I think, isn't that, you're gonna come up from the fells and you're gonna be able to get into it by the Forest Circle?
Yes, both. Yes.
That's the whole-
And can Forest Circle, that's Bill's point, can it accommodate a trailhead?
Yeah.
Tom is a good student.
I would imagine so. And I think part of, one of the improvements that we would look to try to bring to that property is-
Is parking?
Parking. Off-road parking for, on Forest Circle.
I'd like to, rather than assuming so, I'd like to see, like, we should think about, if that's also the site of the affordable housing, how does, how does a trailhead fit there? I mean, it's not particularly wide, and it's also quite vertical. These are the details I'd like to-
Yeah, let me just jump in here.
Yeah, please, Mike.
Just as, just to kind of-
We're going really late here, Rick.
Of, just a point of information.
Trying to wrap it up, Bill.
So we, we had, you know, discussed with members from the WCCP and some Conservation Commission members that, you know, I think people, they all support the project, but they, they like it better without the complication of the affordable housing piece. So it is, you know, I think our objective now to exclude that piece and have the entire parcel just be, the 13.41 acres be used only for conservation. And so that was a lot of feedback, and especially from WCCP members who, again, supported it, but were, said they'd like it more if it were that way. So-
So let's, okay, ask a question, and then we'll wrap up.
I should have asked this first, but Paris had good questions that he was asking. I think at least two, three of us haven't actually seen the article. So my question would be for Concom, what was the vote that was unanimously supported? And what is the article that was proposed to them? I think that meeting wasn't recorded, so I can't go back.
I think it was, I don't know, I think Tracy, you made the motion, right? And it was just to support the, I forget if it was the-
Yes. I don't think we got into the, the funding aspects of it, but the vote was to support the acquisition of the Forest Ridge property by the town and to support and to take over the management of that parcel as a conservation property within the town under our normal procedures.
Okay.
So do we have a copy of the article? Or were we seeing that on Monday?
You'll see it on Wednesday, or whenever it's compiled.
The article is very simple, though.
It's the same article that was at the table on the 8th.
It's the same one, it's just, I think, maybe-
One five million?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's-
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so the article itself is just one sentence, it's fairly, but it's, it's very similar to what Tracy indicated.
Okay. Thank you. There may be more questions, but not tonight.
Thank you so much for coming in and staying around. Really appreciate it.
If you want to come down and cut brush, I got lots of places for you.
Sure do, sure do.
All right. Next topic is the legal bill for 164 Street, moving up to Forest Ridge. So this is, it's in the packet. There was one last bill from Marion Quill related to the 164 Street estate. I had Stacy pull, you know, the Select Board and, Select Board Town Managers off- I had Stacy pull, you know, the select board and, and select board town manager's office, we've used ARPA funds, we've used the town manager's budget to fund an appraisal, we've put some ARPA money toward design and environmental studies. So this is closing out the bill and I didn't, I think we got agreement that, I forget which town department called, and I'm not going to out them, actually I don't remember, but to not be outreaching to Maureen Quill at this point. We own the property. Any legal questions should come to us and through me, Tallaman. But this was one bill that was kind of lingering and we didn't know about. And we're looking to use Select Board Housing Fund to close it out and pay it off and clear the last bit of outstanding business on 164.
What's the number on it?
$3,159.16.
Say that again.
$3,159.16.
Second.
Second.
Move that the Select Board appropriate $3,159.16 from the Select Board Housing Fund to pay the final invoice from Maureen Quill for services for her for 164 Street.
There you go. Good job, second.
Full sense. All right, there's a second. Any additional debate?
Did we agree to take on these liabilities on the property?
Yes, we sure did.
Yeah.
Any outstanding legal bills, any outstanding debt? We were paying for insurance. We pay utilities. We took all of that on when we took possession.
Okay. That just wasn't in the packet, so I didn't know why we were getting this bill.
Fair enough.
As it states in his cover letter, that it's part of the MOU that was dated.
What was the number, Anthea?
$3,159.
And 16 cents.
Forget the cents.
Yeah. It's not the amount that I care about, it's just making sure that we're actually paying for things that we're supposed to pay for. So if everything you guys are saying is true, I wish it was in the packet, but otherwise I have no problems.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional debate? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we can instruct Stacy to go ahead and pay that bill and no one is to call them at this point?
Actually, there's a few names at the end of it that I let people ask and trust people in the market.
Okay. Oh, that's who it was. Fair enough. Okay. So under fall town meeting articles, there's a couple of things to take up tonight. Pars, do you want to talk about solar tonight? And then we want to talk about the letter from the moderator in town meeting time. And then I think I want to at least have a discussion about Mr. Gulick and some of the other neighbors on temporary versus permanent easement. But let's go solar, town meeting time, and the culvert. And then we're going to wrap up and go to executive session, so.
So Vern, you should get, shoot, you should get this in your box momentarily. And Maura or Steve should, or sorry, Michelle or Steve should certainly jump in on this one too, in terms of solar. So we had a conversation today with Ken Pruitt, with Jay from the FPVC and a handful of other people, Tom Hopcroft from the school committee. And what the feedback was from Beth Greenblatt, who's the consultant, is that it is going to be hard to get all these projects done this year. And specifically recommending that we move forward only with some small projects, like the DPW roofs at 15 Lake Street. So we have, you know, debated that for about an hour. And our conclusion was while we could do a small project via PPA, it's not particularly helpful. And there's not a large project that we would acquire this year where we'd really avail ourselves of the 30% tax credit. And so the net result is that, I think our view was, you know, yes, the big beautiful bill credits will expire this year. It's probably likely that panel pricing will continue to come down somewhat. It's also true, the state, and Jay had actually just come from or going to a meeting about this, the state is going to make up some of the difference of the 30% credit. And so while we really, you know, were trying to get the sun this year, we don't really need to. And instead, we're better off hiring a designer and an engineer to do the work and do that for all of the sites. So Winchester School, High School roof, as well as the canopy, McCall canopy, VO, North Parking Lot canopy, DPW, 15 Lake Street roofs, and then Transfer Station potentially a canopy. So the article we've talked about doing instead is an article to appropriate money for engineering. And then we would take off the, I don't know if it was six articles or eight articles.
Six.
Six, yeah, it was eight. It's eight and then we came six. We combined McCall and VO. So we would switch those out and put in this article, that would, that single article to allow us to hire an engineer to do all this work. The question is, how much does engineer cost? Is this a $50,000 expense or a $250,000 expense? The answer is, we are going to find out in the next week because we need to call a few of the engineering firms who have done the work for Lynch. And then I think we had a contact who had done a big design of three schools in Swamscott. And I think there's one other name as well that came up, the big, one of the big, you know, design engineering firms that all of you will know. We're going to call them, just get a sense of roughly what's the pricing, so we'll have that for the warrant or for the motion book. But I think the view is, we can do these projects as soon as next year, but rather than try to rush, given the feedback we're getting, we're better off doing it right next year. And while we will not avail ourselves of the credits, that shouldn't be catastrophic. And then we could, and Mike had raised this, and I mentioned this on the call, that we probably would then be able to go forward with ownership, potentially for all of them. And I think that would be much harder to do this year. And I know Mike had said that. I think, Michelle, you're in favor of ownership. I'm in favor of ownership, so.
So I want to talk timing. So the warrant closed on the 19th for everyone other than the select board. So the charter states that the warrant closes roughly 45 days before town meeting and that subjects submitted to the select board have that deadline. But select board, our deadline is when the warrant prints, which is basically Monday is when it goes to print. It will be in people's hands late next week. Then motions are due and the motion would be where we'd have the actual dollars for this engineering study or a range of dollars for engineering study. So if the select board isn't comfortable putting, making a tweak to the solar article to reflect what Pars described, we can have a meeting on Friday and we can review it then. But this is editing an existing article versus putting a new one on, but we can still put a new one on. But I think there's some benefit in putting it on as select board versus as an individual member of the select board, which you could also do as an individual member.
Yeah.
Like you haven't seen it because it was like literally a today conversation. So I want to just get the temperature of the group in terms of we can, it's a tweak, but it's a change of direction, you know, from a PPA and a purchase to an engineering to come up with designs and drawings. But we do need to make a decision by Friday or Pars can just put it on by himself.
Yeah. And you have language in front of you, I sensed it from everybody just now, but the reason this is moving and iterating so quickly is because we are, I call it, running a no huddle offense here, right? We woke up on July 4th with this law changing and we didn't understand the solar provisions for three weeks. And the Department of Treasury's guidance came out in August. And we've hired Beth and we've...
As of last week.
And we've consulted with Select. So like this group of people, Michelle and I are part of it, with Ken, Tom Hopcroft, Jay, and Carl Rexler from EMC. So we have school committee, energy management, EFPC, select board, and town sustainability manager. We're like trying to work through this as information comes in. So this was the feedback from Beth, who only came on board last week, which Steve and Mark helped to put in place.
Just, we would, the proposal is to put this on and take off the others.
Six.
Yeah.
So...
So we would basically tell town meeting, rather than try to like figure out PPAs and purchases for like six projects or four projects now, four to six projects, let us go do the engineering design work. We are going to lose the federal credits, but we'll probably get some state credits that'll at least partially make up for it. Let us come deal with a baked Big Bang proposal in spring town meeting. Swamscott just did three schools, including the high school. Like that's like what other towns are doing.
I mean, it essentially feels like rolling in, let us look at these six things and try to do something into one, like a very intentional, we're just going to look at it, we're not asking you permission to go ahead with something.
Down to the drawings level, so that you could actually purchase the panels for the scope and the scale of the thing that we're going to do and which sites are most, you know, shovel ready. Yes, it's more detailed than just engineering. It's right down to like, we want this thing installed in that place with this much, you know, groundwork needed.
When you go with like a PPA or an award to a design build, it's very conceptual, your awarding. This is much more like, here's a set of drawings that you can then go, you can almost like a general contractor can go.
Yeah. No, I mean, when we did the solar for Lynch before, it was again, like we were getting numbers. We had the article in and we're postponing when that showed up in town meeting so that we had the numbers. Right.
Kind of feel like that again.
So understand that.
So do people want, because are we having state of the town on Friday?
Oh, yeah, we didn't talk about that. I don't think we need to convene the whole body, but I do think, if you go back to that...
Because I'm just thinking, if we want to have a quick 13, 15 minute meeting on this...
I think we can. Because I think what we should do, Michelle and Anthea, really is, I think we should convene Workstream One. Because the, and we'll talk about this in the executive session, I think there's a reason we should convene Workstream One, which sounds slightly mysterious, but we may want to talk to, you know, one of the town staff members. And so we can notice it as a full state of the town thing, just saying, we're really focused on nailing the schools and the municipal operating. And if you're not, if you're focused on capital, like you don't even need to come.
So I just want to be mindful of, you know, having a chance to digest it at this table. So if people want to digest it, we can do a quick 15 minute meeting at 8:45 on Friday.
I would just say if we're, I guess we're not reopening the warrant to changes, then I'm happy to go with whatever others want to do for that. I was going to say, if we had to reopen the warrant to do it, let's just do them both.
Yeah. What do you think, Bill?
I have questions. I don't know if you want to answer them now and how quickly you can answer them.
Do you want to take them up on Friday or do you want to follow offline?
Depends what your questions are.
Yeah.
I could talk to you offline or you could raise them now, whatever you prefer.
I mean, in terms of getting this onto the fall town meeting warrant, I guess, given the extreme and abnormal circumstances of the big beautiful bill and the scramble that's caused upon us, and the fact that this is not really reopening the warrant to put a new article on there, but an amendment to something that's already been proposed, that makes me comfortable with the process. And that kind of highlights something that's going to come up next, I think. But in terms of actually doing this in the fall versus the spring, if this is no longer a rush for the sake of getting the tax credits that are going to expire, why do it now? Why not wait until the spring when we don't have to scramble so much?
Because if you do the engineering in the spring, you're then doing construction and you're just delaying the whole thing. Right. So this is just asking for the money to do the design work.
Yeah, I understand.
And so then we would implement the panels in, we could probably award projects in spring town meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just delaying it six months. And I think these projects are...
Well, if we're delaying it, then we're probably hitting potentially construction issues if anything is going in the ground. So if we were to then have to vote to do it in November of next year, it might not happen until...
Spring of '27.
Of '27.
I mean, I'm supportive of the idea. It's just a matter of, is this getting, are we approaching things differently for any good reason here? And...
I mean, I think we're approaching it differently for exactly the right reason, right? We've been, I think the group is the right group, right? We have energy management, EFPC, school committee, us sustainability, and then now we have some consultants. I think that the group has a lot of experience with solar, right? Michelle, you as well. And I think the view is, we were trying very hard to see if we could take advantage of it this year. We always had in our minds, if we couldn't, it would be a spring town meeting approach. And what we're asking for is the ability to go do it. It was basically, can we do it in a hurry up way where we might actually have a bit of inefficiency, but we will get, like for example, awarding a PPA where we might otherwise go with an ownership approach, but the 30% credit would make that still worth it. I think the view is, given the state's policy, you know, discussions and the fact that it appears to be very hard to do a full purchased array this year, which would be where you'd get 30% of a million dollar array would make it worth it.
But you're saying why we're not doing what we originally planned to do. Why does moving forward with engineering at fall town meeting, what is the necessity of doing it then versus waiting till spring?
It's a measure that saves us money. Once these arrays are built and implemented, it also obviously reduces our carbon emissions. So it satisfies two municipal objectives. And we have a whole, you know, group of people working on it. And I appreciate if this came out of thin air, you'd say we're two days from the warrant closing, but...
Yeah, I would.
But I would just suggest it didn't, right? We've had...
Yeah.
We've been talking about this for a while.
For a while. This has been a topic at, between state of the town and the select board, on a weekly basis for two months.
Right.
Well, there's also potentially first mover advantage. If the state puts dollars and makes dollars available as the Fed dollar expires and we're in a position to grab it because we have a plan with designs and drawings versus getting drawings done and starting in June, this gets us, I think, you know, closer to grabbing that money.
And, you know, we received a huge benefit with the Lynch project and, you know, we, the timing worked out really well where we were able to kind of jump right on the federal incentives and do that. But it's, you know, obviously that's not going to be there in the future, but I think we will always be looking to get this work done and we have for a while. And so having the engineering and having that process done, I think just moves it forward for us and starts, you know, committing to the policy objective, but also the financial one. So I'm supportive, however you want to put it on.
You want to meet Thursday instead of Friday? Well, let's just try to get another meeting on the books because I don't want to rush Bill through it.
No, you've answered my questions. We could vote now and save everybody some time.
Okay. I don't want to rush the vote. If you're ready to make a vote now, that's great. Okay.
I will say, not to say again something mysterious on camera, but like, we may need to talk Friday anyway.
That's fine, but not for this.
Not for this, sure.
Okay. Then let's take this vote.
What is our motion here? Move that we adopt, move that we include on the warrant the article as presented regarding solar and remove the previously presented...
PPA and solar.
PPA and solar.
Second.
I'm going to make a friendly amendment.
Yeah, please.
To say, instead of remove and everything, to amend the warrant to replace the previously provided articles concerning solar with the now revised article concerning solar.
Second.
To make it very clear, we're not reopening the warrant. We're amending something that was already there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is the school committee meeting this week?
I don't know.
I don't think they are. All right. The only reason I ask is because all but one of these is, I guess, no, DPW and Transfer Station, all but two are theirs. They had asked if we were open, well, Tom had asked if we're open to cosponsoring, but I don't think they are meeting, so it's fine.
They probably can't cosponsor at this point unless they take a vote by Thursday, Friday.
That's what I was saying, that's fine.
Okay.
They can always present it with us.
The next thing that is currently on the warrant is the culvert on Everdav. So you have in front of you, and I met with Matt this afternoon, but you heard some neighbor public comment, you have a couple of comments, emailed statements to us and a memo from Matt specifically to these repairs. So what I think, there are four butters. There's the Gulicks, the Norworthies, and the Sarnies. The fourth is the Boat Club. They actually own some land on Everdav. I didn't know. Looked at a map today. So the three neighbors who have reached out to us in person or via email or via phone call have said that they are willing to waive compensation for a temporary easement, which I think we have, we're prepared to compensate, but to waive that payment in return for not having a permanent easement on their property. So what I would like the board to consider or at least debate tonight, and we can set a time limit on it, but Matt would say, and he has his written statement, that we could do the work with temporary easements. The permanent easement allows the town to inspect, to check in on the, you know, how the repairs are holding up. It makes it easier to do that work on an ongoing basis. If we move forward with just temporary easement, we would do it now. I suppose the easement could have a duration that we could set. But do we wish to amend that article, which says to do engineering on the Everdav culvert and to authorize the select board to take by a permanent or temporary easement for and to authorize the Select Board to take by a permanent or temporary easement for the properties? If we needed to, if we couldn't negotiate, if we had to do eminent domain. So, this sort of bubbled up early last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, I guess. A Tuesday email, a Thursday email, a Monday night comment. I did speak with Matt to say, help me give some information to the Select Board, and wanted to ask if anyone wished to make that amendment. I'm not sure to that specific article number, but the language would just be to strike the word permanent, so.
I think this is a good development, and something that we should look into. But I have numerous questions that I would need counsel to answer before I could make an informed vote on this. And given the crazy intricacies of easements, eminent domain, and everything else, I think that it really behooves the board that we have counsel here to have a discussion about.
The article though is already on the warrant.
It is.
For permanent.
And temporary.
Or temporary.
So, we would strike permanent is the suggestion.
Correct.
Strike that article.
Strike the permanent word.
Okay, it says permanent or temporary. It's what the article says.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so get town council. That's fair.
Yeah.
So, and I think.
But if town council says that we can do what we need to do and protect ourselves the way we need to protect ourselves, and we can come to an agreement with the butters, I see absolutely no reason why we shouldn't do that.
Okay, let me follow the town council.
Yeah.
You mean, you mean go with the temporary?
With what the neighbors are requesting, I think is what Bill's saying.
Yeah, I also think, I mean, it's not just council. We need, you know, town manager and town engineer to tell us they're okay with that too. Because Matt's letter is.
Matt would, I mean, we sat down with Matt today at 2:30, and he said, you know, his memo is, that's certainly the preference, but they can do it with temporary easements. It would not delay, or it wouldn't delay and it wouldn't prohibit the project from being completed. They would have access to complete the repairs.
And, you know, one of the issues is kind of ongoing inspection as well. I mean, we really have been inspecting, I mean, that's how we identified the issue, right? I mean, so, I don't think having a temporary easement precludes the town from, you know, inspecting the culvert in the future.
And I want to invite Steve to weigh in on this, because you've sat with Matt as well. And did you sit with one of these neighbors, maybe? Did they come in?
The gentleman that was here tonight.
Oh, this same gentleman?
Mr. Gulick.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I think also Matt is looking at, one of the pieces that I think should have been done, or is part of this, is look some flow tests on the upstream side. Because this renovation or repair does not increase the flow. And so, there's still a flooding issue, potentially, which should be considered as part of this in terms of how you approach this project, I think. And I think Matt is looking and trying to get that flow information and what it would cost to get it. It's an interesting project, because you're going to do a repair that doesn't increase the flow, but will hold this temporary thing for 10, 15 years and spend a lot of money. Is it, is, I think it's more complicated than just doing this work. Because, I mean, 10 years from now, or five years from now, if you don't do the project, and there's no reason to think it'll happen, but let's say that the thing collapses. Then you're gonna have to do a major overhaul anyway. Does it make sense to take a look at the parameters now to make sure that, if you do $800,000 worth of repairs and you can't increase the flow, is that cost effective?
So, that's a different wrinkle.
It is. It is.
Which would be a different kind of motion.
It'll come up.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think the issue of the temporary easements is a piece, but you're also talking about, and I'll take Matt at his word, but you're talking about doing work on private property, which is a wrinkle that, I'm not an attorney, but it's a wrinkle that kind of raises questions about, is that appropriate? And maybe it is, under a temporary easement thing, that may be a legal question for council to take a look at. But this is, this is a project that should be thought through and being able to address the questions that are going to come up, I think, from the neighbors and others at that site.
I also appreciate the neighbors and others seem to be growing support for doing the more long-term renovation.
So, we should, so I asked the question at this table, in that hour-long discussion we had on this project, for what would it cost to do the permanent project? And the number that was given was 1.5 million. Here's the thing, though. I got a follow-up from the Capital Planning Committee. That 1.5 million came at a time a cost estimate for the temporary repair was 300,000.
Yeah.
So, I would probably double that number.
Double, yeah.
So, like, just to give you a sense of, that may be a $3 million plus, because it's now 800, that was 600, by the way. So, because I think they told us 600. So, if it's gone up almost two and a half, three times, that could be, you know, just scaling that estimate. The one and a half, I wouldn't bet. That was literally, at the same time, the temporary repair was 300. So, I think it's like 4 million is what that would imply.
And that may be the best way to go, because if you're talking a major project to redo that and increase flow, you've got all kinds of utilities in that road.
Yeah.
That may be impacted by this, unless you're going to drop the inlet on it. And it's, you're talking about some serious engineering to pull this together.
So, do we want to get in touch with town council on striking permanent? Or do we want to, between Steve and I, follow up with Matt to circle back to capital planning to say, we're not sure this article is appropriate for fall town meeting? We can do both. We can do both. But if it proceeds, and if there's a concern about flow and is now the right, do we need more time to do flow study before we actually open up the ground and do repair? Would we just pull it and put it back on in the spring? Meanwhile, these easements, I suppose, would still be an issue. But would we?
You're saying delay the repair.
I mean, it's, it's not, it could be our call. We've cosponsored with Capital Planning. But I wouldn't want to pull the rug out from under them without Steve and Matt and Capital Planning having a conversation. But if those are some concerns that, you know, doing this to then, and still not increase the flooding, if, you know, Mr. Gulick says it rains hard, it still floods.
I just think it's a question that you have to be prepared to answer from the neighbors or any citizen.
At town meeting, yeah.
And on a worse case, you could pass over the article, you know, rather than remove it if there's not adequate information, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the issues too, I think, is that the culvert is too small for the water flow, right? This is what we're talking about. And so, the head wall, which we are looking to repair, just gets water rushing against it, you know, all of the time. So, that's the, you know, erosion issue that we're facing, is that with the new impervious surfaces in that neighborhood, there's more water coming faster during some of those storm events. And so, that's, where before we might have thought the repair was the best option, it may actually be looking at the flow and analyzing it down the road, so.
How would people like to proceed?
I, I don't think we should pull it. I think we should leave it as is. I think it's good to answer those, you know, get those questions answered or thinking about.
From, okay.
I also would say, I don't think we should amend this. I agree without talking to town council, but I think we just let it.
We'll definitely talk with town council.
Go for the warrant as is and have those conversations go forward with town council, because we can always amend that article before town meeting with notice, right?
Well, the article is for, quote, improvements of a certain culvert. It's not limited just to repair. It could be renovation. It could be anything. We have all the wiggle room there to make this the cheaper repair option or the more expensive.
More robust replacement.
More robust replacement option. So, I think, I think the question is, which, what motion are we drafting? Not, what are we doing with the article?
Do you still want me to try to get town council to be able to dial in on Friday with temporary versus permanent answers?
It might be, can I just talk to them and get my questions?
Oh, of course you can. I just didn't know if you wanted to.
If that's, I think that would be a more efficient use of time.
That's fine. So, just let me, let me know, so we can decide. Because I think if, if we think there's benefit and the neighbors are comfortable, and we want to strike that word permanent, let's have that meeting on Friday. But I'll make sure you can talk with town council before.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just say, I appreciate there may be a better solution here. I had even said, should we just do a full replacement when they're here? Roger's exact words were, well, if we had, I think I said, what if the other, the money magically appeared? And he said, well, we wouldn't even use it on this, right? And that was just a permanent version of the existing culvert. If we were to widen the culvert to actually accommodate the stormwater flow, I think we're talking about a big, big project here. And I'm not your capital planner. I think they would say, we do this kind of patch fix work everywhere. And so, if we, right, so if we ended up with the extra $3 million, we have a million other assets. We need to go patch. I mean, that's just the reality. So, to me, like, the worst thing is we delay this for a $5 million, not just new permanent culvert, but a bigger one, that we have no way of funding, candidly. And then, in the meantime, something happens and Everett Ave floods because the culvert fails.
Okay.
So, I would, I would say, like, we'll just fix it personally.
Okay.
It takes us five years to find the money to do a permanent.
All right.
Or do the cheaper repair option now, or do the.
At least extend its life.
Extend life. Like, if we go out and try to do a full rebuild.
Yep.
With the widening.
Yep.
Utilities that are there with the environmental.
There's land taking involved in that.
Land taking. We're talking years.
Yeah.
Many.
Okay. So, then the next article, before we get to consent and exec, is town meeting time. We had a letter from the moderator that came in on Thursday, got a heads up. It came in Friday morning. The GovRegs committee is recommending a switch to town meeting time. The study committee, Mike, you were on the study committee, is, my understanding is that they are recommending town meeting time.
Yes.
GovRegs did not submit an article in time to switch this, or to get this on the warrant by the 19th. So, the ask is for us to put it on and let town meeting decide its fate. I think that's how I would summarize it. So.
I mean, I will say, you know, there's been a lot of time and energy invested in the analysis between Robert's Rules and Town Meeting Time. And the committee's done, you know, really a great job and has a pretty good justification for that. You know, in writing, I know Pierre Haley put it together. So, it seems like it's necessary to move forward. And I think it would be better to move it forward in the fall and in the spring anyways, because these are the kind of things that we tend to do in the fall. And you don't get distracted on the budget side. And would help us, you know, also do some education around it between.
Yeah. I thought the statement of new town meeting members who get elected in March would just learn town meeting with one set of rules. I think there's some value to that.
Yeah.
Would we sponsor this?
Yes. That would be the ask.
They asked us to.
Well, the moderator can't sponsor articles, presumably.
We would, we would put it on ourselves.
It has to be us.
Oh, I see. I understand.
It would be us or the town clerk.
Request from the.
Yeah, the request from the.
He asked, but it has to be somebody else, right? So, it's a town clerk you said could do it?
Not that, I've not heard from her today to do it.
In theory, she could do it, you're saying?
Yes. I mean, Steve could put it on, but that really does not seem right to do to the new guy.
But Mike, the proposal is we would do it.
Yeah.
That is the proposal. And let town meeting decide its fate, because it's town meeting's rules.
So, I have a sort of philosophical point on this one. The timing and opening the warrant is more a function of it. It sounds like, actually technically, the warrant's not closed. Like, my philosophical view here is that these are the rules of the legislative body, and all we're doing as the executive is putting it on, because for the way our charter is structured, the executive makes the agenda for the legislature, for legislative session. And it's sort of, we all are members of the legislature too, and so we should vote as members there. But I think it's not the right practice for the executive to decide on what the rules are for the legislative body. I think it's for the legislative body itself to make those rules. And we can vote as five members of 192. But I would, I would defer to the judgment of the majority of town meeting for what they want to use to govern their own proceedings. And all we're doing is putting it on the agenda.
Letting it be debated.
Yep.
In that setting, yeah.
Just philosophically, it would be weird if the governor decided the legislative rules of the state senate, right?
No, the decision in front of us tonight is.
Is just putting it on.
To put it on the warrant under our name. That's, that's, if we choose to put on the warrant, favorable action by us will be a separate vote.
And to be clear, I probably will, will vote for like neutral action, because I actually think this is entirely town meeting's choice.
It's a town meeting decision, yeah.
Not because I'm, I would probably vote for it on the floor of town meeting. I just, this is my philosophical view here, is like, this is town meeting's decision.
Yeah. And it's trying to have them make it.
And they should make it.
In the fall.
Yeah, sure.
So.
I'm fine with them.
And to be clear, if we reopen the warrant to put this on, we are putting this on as ourselves and not with putting it on on behalf of.
It sounds like we're not reopening the warrant.
The study committee. I mean, that just seems like.
It seems like a backdoor to me. I spent all summer reading town meeting and comparing it to Robert's Rules of my own. If this, whenever this is put before town meeting, I'll probably support it. But I think this is something that really was tasked to the Committee on Government Regulations, and it was their responsibility, and it's their charge. And if they didn't meet the deadline to get a warrant article, for the very good reason that they're still preparing it, I don't like the idea of us coming in and just using the special power of the Select Board to put it on the warrant.
Let's cover, why didn't GovRegs put the sun?
I don't know.
It said in the letter that they weren't prepared, that they're still putting together their studies and appendix and everything else. And I appreciate we're all busy, but I just see that as a slippery slope. I think that it is very important for us to demonstrate to other boards and committees, residents, town meeting, everyone that, you know, town meeting articles are important. They need to be fully baked, vetted, and put together in advance and ready to go. I don't like using a backdoor to put something that even if I would support it, just to get it through a little bit easier, a little faster. I don't think there are so many new town meeting members who are to come in in any one spring that getting this passed in the fall makes a big difference. To the contrary, I think that there are probably town meeting members who have served for many, many terms and never opened Robert's Rules. We've survived this long without it. We can go another six months. So, I, I just would much rather, I'd be much more comfortable with the process of, you know, letting the Committee on Government Regulations live up to their charge and bring something when they are fully ready with it and in advance of the deadline.
So, I appreciate that. I do. The study committee, which was created out of town meeting to make a recommendation, has made a recommendation to move to town meeting time. I completely, I do, Bill, I completely appreciate the concern around timing. But I also, I mean, we heard an attorney tell us they would never recommend Robert's Rules. It's like, you know, it's, it's.
But they also said the importance of preparation and the advance work.
The town, the rules don't change in November. The rules would change in May. It's the vote in November. The town meeting that we're about to undertake will follow standard process and Robert's Rules. This is to let the body make a decision sooner than later.
So, maybe it wasn't even in Karen's motion, Karen Connolly. What was, when the study committee finished its work, what was supposed to be the next step?
Report back to fall town meeting with a recommendation.
So, not tell GovRegs to put the warrant. So, this is probably just a little bit.
Like, I think there was a bit of, I think that last bit of a charge was undefined. Yes.
That's the problem. That's exactly the problem that's hitting us right now, which is that, is that it said, come back to town meeting. But that study committee actually, unless they do it as a citizens petition, probably.
Didn't have any authority.
Or Mike can do it as the Select Board representative on his own name. They actually don't have the ability to sponsor an article.
Correct.
And I think that was what nobody thought.
And given that those two bodies, GovRegs and the study committee, both said we should move there, all I'm suggesting is that we give town meeting the chance to move there, and we let them debate it.
The study committee unanimous?
Yes. Yeah, the.
Yeah, I think that was a no.
If the study committees are, like, town meeting, I think Voice voted, the study committee go to do this work. If they're coming back saying, we're ready to put this in front of fall town meeting.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Well, we're going to hear the reports. They're going to be reporting out at town meeting.
It's a question too of notice. And, you know, I think this already being discussed at town meeting and already being before folks and setting up this additional committee, I think people get what the idea is. It's not like we're just trying to slide something in. You know, we're really just kind of supporting a process that's been ongoing. And for whatever reason, the Committee on Government Regulations didn't move forward with something. Maybe there was miscommunication there. Things happen. I think it's important to town meeting that we move it forward, you know, as soon as possible, whether it be one of us or whether it be the majority of us. I think town meeting does, you know, look to us to move things forward to them that are essential like this.
I'm going to push back strongly on that, because I think town meeting vocalized very loudly that moving forward quickly was not their preference with the Committee on Government Regulations articles last spring. And instead, it seemed that there was a lot of criticism that we shouldn't be bringing bylaw changes unless they're fully fleshed out and reviewed and not rushed in any way, shape, or form. And I still just don't see why there's a need to rush this forward when there's a deadline that's been missed for no good reason. There's more reports and studies coming that haven't been provided.
Yeah.
Like, I. Like, I don't see the rush. I prefer the process. I like to take things slow and deliberate. And so I'm, I, that's my position. It's not going to change.
But to be clear, the study committee, this is a question, not a statement. The study committee believed on September 11th that they were done. Is that a true statement?
That is true.
So.
They were, in my opinion, town meeting gave them the charge, not CogRex.
Right.
This is why we need our counsel to interpret the events.
My point, Bill, I think we're making the same one, is I, I don't think that the process has been rushed here. It's the same question that's been in front of the bodies. So it's more of just piecing together what happened with forming this committee and discussion at town meeting and now the recommendation from the subcommittee. So, you know, I.
It will be a public hearing on this article like any other article.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, town meeting members will be invited to a hearing, whether it's a GovRags hearing, our hearing. Moderator comes to the hearing, but the town manager will have a hearing on it.
So.
Because every article gets a hearing.
I'm just reading the memo again as we talk through this. So Peter's motion was to come back, and it was for GovRags to bring it back in the fall. Karen's motion was the study committee sort of loosely try to come back in the fall. But so if, and then in the last paragraph on this first page, it says, on the 19th, GovRags voted to support the change as it did before spring town meeting, citing the unfinished appendix and one member of the study committee's desire to wait until the spring town meeting in 2026 to propose the change, they decided not to include it in their article on chapter two of the bylaws.
So if Peter's motion was to bring it back in the fall, GovRags has chosen not to bring it back in the fall.
That was Peter's motion, but Karen's motion was to bring it back in the fall from the study committee, not from GovRags.
Yeah.
And both motions passed.
I mean, it's like, we're just, I don't understand why neither of these committees said they were bringing it.
Well, and quite frankly, I didn't reach out to say, hey, where is all this? Because it's really not our job to be chasing things down, but.
Well, I think the last sentence here is the key for why the study committee didn't bring it, which is they didn't think it was their job to bring it.
Yep, sure.
The last sentence of the, like, the study committee decided not to exceed its scope to full.
I mean, play this out, and I can, I totally respect the process concerns. But if we play this out and we have a public hearing like we would in every article, and there's two reports from GovRags and the study committee that town meeting hears and town meeting debates it, we just have an answer versus waiting six more months to have an answer. So there's not a lot of downside risk for letting town meeting decide if they're ready to make that change or not.
Why did the one study committee member want to delay? That's the only question.
I don't know.
So given that we have until Monday, can we put a couple of questions together that go back to GovRags?
We have, let's say we have until Friday.
Well, that's where I'm getting to, sorry.
Yes.
Put a couple of questions together that go back to GovRags and the study committee to say, you know, has come to the select board to reopen the warrant to put this on and we want to confirm that, that both bodies, GovRags and study committee.
Are recommending this.
Would recommend that this happens. And if they both say yes, then I'm much more comfortable reopening the warrant to put it on if the.
And I fully respect that, but I would say I only care that the study committee wants to put this on. I think they were given a very, I forgot about Peter's motion until I read it in this memo. I think Karen's motion was the one that I think most people listened to, which was, this is a group people are going to go do it. There's going to be a former moderator. I think there's actually two former moderators on it.
That's right. Yeah.
Select board member on it. That's the body I want.
And member from CogRex as well.
And a member from CogRex.
And town meeting members.
Yeah. That body, to my opinion, was created specifically for.
It's like six, seven people, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they think this is good and ready, I'm willing to go for it.
Let me chase down the answer.
Okay.
We will have another meeting. We'll talk about a culvert. We'll talk about this.
If we put it on, you know, CogRex could also, you know, co-sponsor it with us. We would just be the lead sponsor on it, so.
They'd have to have a meeting by Friday.
Or they could just have, they could just have favorable action.
Yeah.
They could just recommend favorable action.
Okay. I will follow up. I wouldn't put their name on it without them taking a vote to.
Well, right. No, but I'm just saying that if, if we move it forward, then they would just be an additional sponsor. They wouldn't be the lead sponsor, so the function would, would still make it work, but I.
All right. Let's, let's do consent agenda and then we have two topics and exec.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, September 29, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, WinCam, thank you. We're going to say goodnight and we're going to go to executive session.
Run to the bathroom quickly. We start signing things.
We can start.